Welcome, everybody, to our regularly scheduled January 13, 2015 Selectman's meeting at 7:30. Before we proceed, I'd like to ask our audience if they'd like to join us in a place of reading.
... To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to remind everybody that we're being recorded today by our new Carver Halifax consortium. Access Corp. We're no longer with the original Halifax, with the original Comcast studio. We're now in a whole new building, a whole new setup, a whole new set of rules. That's why you see these wonderful mics here now. You can actually hear us. I wonder if you can hear me?
Yeah, and we'll still have the same quality shows that we've had before.
Yes. So, and we're also being covered by our playmate from our Plumpton Halifax Express paper also. So, watch what you say and then have... There's hidden microphones back there too, so... No, I don't think there is, but anyways. Before we go any further, has anybody liked to add anything to the agenda? Any meetings they might have attended? Any public statements they'd like to make?
Just Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everybody made it through safely.
No?
Just that I know when the chief, as in the police chief, will be talking with you about the possible full-time appointments or the other matters that you should be discussing with them after that.
Yes.
Okey-dokey.
So, all right, Troy, I guess, would you mind doing the abatements?
Yes. Have everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes dating from July 8th through November 10th?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Any changes or implications? Then I will move those as typed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to move to affirm and approve the following payroll warrant number 47 for $339,592.11. Then the warrant number 48 for $27,472.12. Withholding warrant number 49 for $125,687.82. Then the warrant number 50 for $188,946.27. Payroll warrant number 51 for $342,970.81. Then the warrant number 52 for $134,840.76. Withholding warrant number 53 for $117,515.66. Then the warrant number 54 for $60,139.18. School warrant number 55 for $295,989.31. The ambulance commitment 11C, $14,168.44. Ambulance commitment number 12A for $14,906.44. Selectman's bill to express newspaper, $35. And Selectman's to Ellis Auto Body Service, $541.56. And Selectman's bill to Carver Halifax Community Access Media for $100,000. No change?
Second.
And that completes that.
For 100K.
That was just for the microphone. They haven't paid for the other stuff yet.
Uh, no. Was there a second?
Oh, I did.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Except I abstain from 47 payroll, please.
I would move to approve the payments of the following warrants and committed bills. Payroll warrant number 56 for $325,016.23. Then the warrant number 57 for $51,393.6. Withholding warrant number 58 for $121,319.7. And ambulance commitment 12B for $12,591.56. And mobile park fee number 1 for $5,160.
Second.
Any further discussion on my abstain from 56 payroll, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have ambulance commitment, we already did. Mobile park license, we are...
We have the Selectman's payroll.
I don't know. Right now, scheduled bill payments. Selectman's expense account, $63... $68.30. And that was for Charlie, administrator, managers' meetings, Hanson, Carver, Ward, Plymouth, Mileage. Recruitment employment, $1,182. Beth Israel, Deaconess, Plymouth, Occupational Health, Resnick Road. From the law account, Attorney's Lawrence Mayo, Espin at August, total of $4,077.50. Youth and Rec concession stand expenditures, $25.71 for National Grid. Town Hall electricity, $1,150.81. That completes the papers.
I'll second those.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Further, I would like to acknowledge the following. Selectman office payroll for Selectman's weekend ending 12, 13, 14, $6,185.84. Weekend ending 12, 27, 14, $6,185.84. And Selectman's payroll, weekend ending 110, 15, $6,435.84. And I'd also like to acknowledge the turnover for 2015, $52.35. 2015, $53, $125. 2015, $54, $1,715. 2015, $55, $200. 2015, $56, $200. And 2015, $57, $1,218.34. And that completes my presentation.
Charlie?
Stuff that I hadn't written up my notes, but are the... These are recycling abatements. Back several weeks ago, and I'll take them in two pieces, the board had denied abatements for fiscal '15 for bills 1969, 2580, and 1885. These were residents who were using ABC Disposal for their trash pickup, and there was not sufficient evidence at the time that these individuals were participating in recycling program. I contacted ABC Disposal about the possibility of getting more information from them, since obviously we're in a situation that the residents felt that they deserved the abatement, but we didn't have enough information to provide it to show they were in a recycling program. So, what ABC Disposal has done is sent letters, one per abatement request, reading that this serves as confirmation that ABC Disposal Service provides office trash and recycling services to all our Halifax customers. Currently, we offer either a 65-gallon or 95-gallon cart for trash. We'll collect all single-stream recycling in clear plastic bags at no extra charge. Attached is a list of items we currently allow to be recycled as single-stream materials. The resident below is an active customer of ABC Disposal Service and is listed as an account that participates in our recycling program. And they list the person's name, their address, and their own account number with ABC. I didn't know whether the board would feel that that letter was sufficient to indicate that those three residents do participate in ABC's... the ABC Disposal's recycling program, and whether that information's sufficient to, in fact, grant abatements for those three.
I think that's as much information that I needed. I think I was the one that pushed the issue in the beginning, was that we needed something that was, you know, definitive, that in fact they were doing the recycling. If that letter in fact states that they're definitively doing recycling, then they are picking up the care service for them. And I have no problem with moving that we reverse our decision made on... What day did we make that?
December 20... I mean, December 9th, I think it was?
Yeah.
On the night.
I'll second that.
It says it's, "And is listed as an account that participates in our recycling program."
Yeah.
So, it's listed as participating, so is the...
Which they didn't... They didn't state that before.
Right.
That they refused to say.
Did they say... I mean, is the recycling, what they say here, is sufficient to meet the state's requirements?
Yeah. I mean, the state simply comes down to that you're supposed to separate your recyclables from your normal household waste.
Okay.
No more or no less than we do our own program.
So, I second Troy's motion to leave recycling the animals to the customers.
They are...
They are bill number 2580, bill number 1885, and bill number 1969.
I can also tell he noted that the first one has been paid. All right, 2580 has been paid.
So, we'll have to...
Except for the late fee, so we'll need to abate that.
And we're paying... If the board approves of the abatements, we're paying any late fees that we're charging these individuals, and we would be refunding anything that the individuals have already paid, whether it's... Whether or not the late fee was paid or not. If it was, obviously, we're abating that too.
As long as everybody understands that. All right. So, was that a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Totally separate case that came in today. This was for fiscal '14, not this year's, but for last year.
I can't believe you're starting with abatements, but okay. Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, they're on...
Yeah, kind of. They're just on the top of the pile.
Am's... Am's realm.
Well, they're on the top of the pile here of the green folder, so...
And this is an add to the agenda?
Yes. This came in fairly late today.
You had your opportunity to add to the agenda, and you...
I know that.
Is that a slap on the wrist?
No, no, I don't mind that.
No, is that a slap on the wrist? Go ahead, Charlie.
Bill number 723. This is for fiscal '14. My house was rented to tenants from 2012 to 2014. They were to pay to recycle... They were to pay recycling to use the service. 2012 was paid. There was no mention made of non-payment. All bills sent to Fuller Street... Sorry, but that's what the narrative says. In my name. I never saw them. No one used the service in 2013, even though, mind you, when I talked to the individual, she indicated that the tenants were there. And it ever had... And it was never abated, never alerted or concerned. They used another service, but I don't know who, and they have moved. I cannot find out who it was. I repay the 2015, which this person did pay earlier today, not want to pay for their non-paid bills, which were simply the '14. Fiscal '13 was paid. Fiscal '14 wasn't paid. Fiscal '15 now has been paid.
I mean, okay.
Sorry. No one told me that this service was mandatory or that the service needed to be paid for if it was being used. Please understand, I have every intention of paying 2015 for my own use, as she's moving back in to the home. I would like to pay 2015 and going forward can cover this cost, but do not want to be held responsible for this service, as I was not living there and had no idea of the policy, nor ever received any bills from the town or from the PO or from my tenants. Now, the bills were sent to the owner's address at the property.
There's a problem that I see. There's one, she says she didn't know that that was noted. Then at first, she starts off saying the people, the tenants, they were supposed to pay it. So, if she knew they were supposed to pay it, then she was aware of it.
Well, and it doesn't matter. I make a motion that we do not grant the abatement.
Second.
I mean, ultimately, they're receiving rents.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
So, I mean, it's like the water bill. I mean, you pay the... The landlord usually pays certain bills, and if she's not aware of it, how do you... How do you not be aware?
She says that the bills were sent to the property, and neither... The post office didn't forward them. She said she had given the post office a forwarding address. The tenants never notified her. So, I'm not excusing anything. This is what my conversation with her. That's what she said.
No, I mean, I can sympathize, but, you know, there's no rules for that, so I'd have to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The street?
And we're set with that? Yes?
Yeah, we're not... It's a non...
No, no, I understand. It was a dial, right. The town clerk had given me this campaign finance report. Needs to be signed by all three members of the board, because it says, "I certify I am a candidate for or hold municipal office," so it's not just folks whose term might be up this year.
It's a what?
This is the campaign finance report form.
Send the... Spend money. You think about spending money, and you didn't do anything last year.
And this is for who?
For all three of you.
Oh. Oh, instead of us doing it individually?
She says at least for this piece of paper, all three of you are to sign that.
Because usually, we do them individually.
Well, I would think you... I think you may have to do an individual report, but if the board wants to hold off and talk to her about it, I'd be happy to relay any questions. We do have another request. Sorry, go back to abatements and for recycling. The resident paid the tax recycling fee after the board voted to deny the abatement. This is bill 2580. Is that one of them that we just passed?
It is.
Okay. So, we're going to waive the $5. Right, okay. So, that's... That's done. Ambulance abatements or adjustments. The fire chief had gotten this in. This is for November 2014 at $9,444.55. Somehow, it didn't go in the green folder. I found this.
You just... All right. So, that's an add.
Yeah.
Ambulance abatement?
Yeah. Ambulance abatement for November of 2014, $9,444.55.
$9,414. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
This is on the ambulance commitment 2014. That wasn't in the...
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's all the stuff. Fire chief, later.
Put back on your notes?
Or if I get to the notes, right. Okay, Chapter 90. With the change in administration, Governor Baker has indicated he's going to release the $100 million of Chapter 90 funding that Governor Patrick did not. So, that moves our amount for the year we're in from 2,700... Sorry. 270,938 to 4,6407. However, we're going to still need to go to town meeting at the special in May to, in fact, appropriate the additional 136,000 or so. And this is separate from any fiscal '16 allocation. I've notified the highway department and the town accountant of this. There's no action to take other than putting into the special town meeting for it, which I've done. You have a letter from the beautification committee. They're asking for permission to develop the town hall lawn area right here in front of town hall. Development involves a spring tulip garden, a summer garden of annuals, and a fall garden of mums using flower containers somewhat varied and attractively arranged. They're going to be coming in to meet with you all to discuss the proposal, and if the board sees fit to obtain permission from you to... for this planting project.
Is that that little spot that they have, uh...
I think the pots are part of the...
The pots are sitting right there.
Yeah. I don't think they're planting right by the flagpole.
No, I think they're waiting for... They're waiting for soil and stuff to be brought in.
So, what was that little excavation project? The tree that was...
Well, the excavation was just the removal of the entire vegetation that had been there. I think they're going to replace it with what they're describing here.
Wasn't there a tree?
Yeah, there were several trees there.
Was there anything wrong with the trees?
Well, some of the trees were designed.
But those trees there were dying?
The ones right out here, several of them were...
Yeah, they were rotted at the core.
So, we've already started the project?
They already had worked with the highway department in that remove. What they're coming in now is a plan for revegetating, let's say, that area.
So, I don't know why they're even asking if they're already going ahead with the project. We already started the project. Am I missing something?
No. They're starting their eyes and cock for teas.
They'll be coming in in a couple of weeks to meet with the board about this. Wenetux at Children's Place has had a dog problem with a Plumpton dog. They've written to Plumpton Board of Selectmen about this. Dogs bothering the children who are there, parents, the employees and such. It's a Plumpton matter, even though the occurrences are happening in Halifax. At one point, in fact, our animal control officer picked up the dog and had it... Eventually, it was returned to the owners. My understanding is since a couple of weeks ago, there have been a lot fewer problems, but nevertheless, I don't know if the board wanted to follow with our counterparts in Plumpton that indicate that they felt action should be... At least the matter should be investigated by the town of Plumpton to determine whether any action needs to be taken.
We don't know whether or not Plumpton actually sent a letter to the owner of the dog to keep it leased or anything of that nature, too.
Not yet, because the letter by Wenetux was sent on January 6th, so just last week. So, we don't know what... If anything's Plumpton done.
I would like to propose to the board that we send a letter to the Plumpton Board of Selectmen or dog officer, whoever it should go to, asking them whether or not there has been a follow-up with the dog when it loose or off leash.
Can I catch up to exactly what was being said here? Wenetux, it is a daycare in this town.
It's on the border, left in Halifax.
There's a resident in Plumpton that is...
His dog has gone across the border.
A dog that comes over the...
Over the border.
Without a pass.
Without a green card.
I think the chief could probably explain it.
Yeah, apparently, this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time now. The dog lives first household on the line of Plumpton and crosses over to where the kids are. I'm fairly confident that the Plumpton ACO has been advised and is working with the owners of the dog. I would certainly agree with sending a follow-up letter to the board to make sure everybody's on the same page, but I think we're all in the same loop and, you know, trying to work on it. But, you know, again, I think a follow-up letter would be great.
I take it it at least sends the message out to the, you know, the one that tests the school, but in fact, we're trying to do something about the issue and not just fluffing it off.
Yeah. Obviously, you know, with the kids coming and going, that's a concern, so it's...
So, it's a neighbor right on the line.
Next household, yeah.
That the dog wanders over.
And Plumpton doesn't have a leash law, so...
But there is a state reg on that, so that should apply in the case where there isn't one in individual towns. Isn't there a statewide?
Again, I'm not sure what... How that would apply to this. And I know the Plumpton dog office is aware of it and working with the owner of the dog. Kind of a tough situation, but they're trying.
Yeah, I thought, like you, Michael, I thought the state required that leash law be put in place.
Yeah, I thought there was something in place at a minimum.
We'll have to find out whether or not that's fact or not.
I'll double-check, but again, you know, it's a Plumpton issue, and they need to take the enforcement action on the dog. And all we can do is try to make the kids as safe as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would agree with Troy. It wouldn't hurt to send a letter. And I'd like to ask Charlie if he can see if there is any state...
I'm not aware that there's a state law, simply because I think many of the more rural communities, more rural than we do, probably do not have leash laws.
No, I... Yeah, I was aware of that, but I heard about that, not having it, but there was some laws in place that should still help.
Well, there's certainly...
Protect bordering towns that...
Well, there's certainly state statutes that say that dogs that are annoyances and such can be dealt with, but those dogs have to be dealt with in those towns. That's our problem.
Well, there's a couple of things I'd like to put in the letter to see whether the dog is, in fact, up date on his rabies shots, what in fact hasn't been done about it, you know, so that we can send a letter back to the school stating this is the action we've taken, if it's okay with the board.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We had our annual letter from Plymouth County indicating whether we were interested in participating in their gasoline diesel fuel bits. Our highway department handles that every three years. They've done that very successfully, so we'll just try to take a pass on this again. Recycling grant. We have a grant for a new roll-off for bulky rigid plastics. This is a 40-yard open-top roll-off for $5,500. And then additional $1,000 for education funds, namely, getting the recycling brochure printed and sent out to households in town. So, a total grant of $6,500. If the board wishes to approve this, then we have two copies. The board would approve this, and the chair would sign it.
I have a couple of questions. This is to purchase the roll-off container?
Yes.
So, there's no cost for the town directly?
Are you having to see anything?
I mean, it's a recycling grant, so it must come out of some money.
Well, it comes out of state funds.
Right, which comes out of us in the deeper pockets. And there's a need for it down there, so they've applied for this grant?
Yes.
And they were accepted for $6,500. That pays for the... So, that means when we... Who hauls these containers out of there?
It'd be part... It's part of our recycling program.
So, is it... It's not replacing one, it's adding one?
I can ask. I don't know whether it's replacing one.
I don't think they have one down there as of yet. I go down there every weekend, and I haven't seen one. The cardboard and the plastic is set on the one side inside the building, so I don't know if there's a particular roll-off of it or not.
I think they have... I know they have for metals and...
Yeah, for metal and gas can stuff. I haven't seen one. That doesn't say it's not there.
I don't have a problem. I'm just kind of curious when...
Well, I'll find out whether it's a replacement or not.
Again, if somebody wouldn't want to make that motion, you can still find out for us.
I would move that...
If you're still comfortable, move.
Oh, I feel comfortable accepting the grant.
And you're right. It does come out of my pocket, but at least we get something back from the state. It works that way, too. I would move that we allow the chair to sign the grant for $6,500 for a roll-off container and educational materials.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, even though it's a little bit before eight, so the police chief is here. We've been talking various times about signing an agreement with Lakeville to use their shelter. This is when we have situations that we have dogs that need to be quarantined, but the... Their usual home is not available, or we have a stray dog that we don't... We're not aware of the owner, but still needs to be quarantined. The agreement had been reviewed by the police chief and town council. There are some concerns in that the dogs that are sent there still in essence are our dogs. We hold all responsibility for those dogs if they... And are liable for any damages caused by the dogs at that facility. And my last back and forth with the police chief indicated he was comfortable enough with getting this signed. We have alternatives if this doesn't work out. Can you mention another kennel?
Yeah, we've always had the Channburg kennel at our disposal.
Is that Bridgewater?
Excuse me?
Bridgewater?
Plumpton. Right. This offers us another alternative if we need it. I... My comment was that if the board and town council and Charlie felt comfortable with the wording of the contract, that that'd be fine with me. Again, it gives us a second alternative in case we need another shelter. That, you know, they offer some facilities that other ones don't. It's rare that we need it typically, but it does give us a second option.
So, this doesn't happen often? This is just a rarity generally?
Yeah. We had to use it a few months ago. It was the first time that I can remember we had to place a dog. It was a very aggressive dog. It was somebody... We don't have the facilities to keep it for any length of time. They were the only ones that were willing to take it, you know, being such an aggressive dog. They were the only ones that were willing to take it, you know, being such an aggressive dog. Um, so it was, it was a last minute, kind of had to thin then. So, you know, again, this doesn't happen often at all, but it does, uh, does offer us the, uh, the ability to have a placement in case we need it in future.
Because typically our long-term, um, shelter, well, anything over a couple of days, it would automatically go to Shattenburg. And the reason why this particular dog could not go to Shattenburg is because he was so aggressive.
Shattenburg will take grumpy dogs.
But this was.
But this one was kind of over the top, so. And we have the abilities to, to hold the dog for a number of days in town, um, but, you know, there's financial offsets in both directions, so.
So, you feel comfortable with the agreement?
Yeah, again, I'm not the lawyer. If, if town council is, is okay with it, um, then we might have disagreed, so I, I. And again, it offers us another opportunity or another, another, uh, option, I should say.
And several other towns have signed a similar agreement with.
Uh, there's, I think there's five or six other municipalities that have signed the same contract that use it routinely, so, um, I, I think it'll be okay.
How long is the agreement for? It's indefinite?
Yeah, I think it's a.
Indefinite?
Yeah.
Open-ended.
I mean, if you're comfortable, attorney's comfortable now. I mean, we, I'd always like a few say-so.
Right, but I, I mean, what the council had indicated was, at the very least, the board and the town should be aware that we still hold all liability for that dog. If that dog bites somebody at, in Lakeville, we're responsible, as an example. If the dog damages the facility, we're responsible.
Well, we're not transferring, we're not transferring the dog and the responsibilities to the location. They just house it there for temporary on our behalf. And I haven't said that.
But it's hard to take liability for something you have no control over.
Yeah, but, you know.
And you try to address some of those controls?
Well, Lakeville has indicated that they're not interested in making any changes since this has been the language they've used.
Right.
Among the other communities. So, I mean, uh, you know, we'd have, if we ran into this situation again, we'd have to find another option and be better. I would rather have this option available to us even with the liability than not to have the option.
But we still had the option even though we didn't sign the agreement?
Well, I think they did that as a favor to us.
Yeah, that was a, a last minute please help because we have no options. I mean, it was.
So, it's, it's the last resort?
Pretty much.
To go down there and to have the agreement is beneficial, even though if the dog there bites somebody there, which we have no control, they, I mean, they should have.
And that was the only question I had, and that's why I referred to town council, so.
I mean, I don't think they'd have some.
Well, I don't think they're going to be interested in having the dog bite somebody, but again, they're, you know, it's our dog and they're saying if you want to use our facility, those are the conditions to do so. If you, we understand that you might not like those conditions, then by all means, find another facility that will provide you with, meet the, your concerns.
And we're not obligated to bring a dog there, so this contract doesn't sort of force us into using them. We are, you know, if we came up with another alternative or, you know, we didn't need to use, um, that facility, we don't have to. So, it's just basically letting them know that we're willing to.
There's a no-cost option right now.
But the one thing it does for us though, if we do have an emergency in the middle of the night on a Sunday night where you can't reach the, the office and the police help, if there's a contract, the person manning the facility has to accept a dog from us if we have a contract with them. Otherwise, they can say no and we're, we're stuck because they're doing us a favor.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to have council look at that. I believe they can turn us down.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Frank, well, yeah, even with the contract.
But unlikely more so than.
Hopefully, and I would hope that the turn down would be for, you know, uh, kennel reasons. They have too many dogs they don't have a placement for or something like that.
The dog's affected with Ebola, so I don't want to go there.
Can you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's where they come from, one of the animals.
So.
Okey-dokey.
Sounds baddie to me. That's where it came from, a bad.
It's a mammal.
Get the mic closer.
Anyway, so is that, um, um, something, uh?
I will make a motion that we sign the like contract between the town of Halifax and the town of Lakeville for the use of their animal shelter when it is needed on offer.
And that's all three of us?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I hope we don't have to use them that often.
And the police chief has an eight o'clock.
All right, well, we, we still had, uh.
Do you want to borrow mine?
Yeah, there are other things we're going to be talking to the chief about, but officially, he's here for a particular purpose. Kim?
What? Well, see, he got mad at me because I hadn't grabbed it, and I said, I didn't grab it. Okay, see, that's why you don't like this, because you and I can't.
So, chief, you're here to ask the board to make two appointments?
Yes, I, I sent a look at the board. We had this discussion before last time I was here that, uh, I'd be forwarding two names off of the I L S for, um, appointment to full-time. Potential off-employment pending medicals and police academies. Um, the two names I sent up, Simpson and Drew, uh, my, my two Pips. So, I'd, I'd be asking the board to, to go ahead and approve those, uh, appointments at full-time. And once that happens, um, my next step is to get waivers for them to, to work in a couple of open slots that we have and try to save some of the overtime that I'm going through in a rush right now, so.
Just give me a minute. One question?
Well, he's, he's inviting them up, so.
That's what I'm saying. Just, how long have we been observing these individuals just so the public knows?
Uh, actually, they've been in training, uh, for almost four months now. Um, so they're, they're both, they're PIs, appointed PIs, so they're ready to, to work for us anyhow. Um, they've been training for the, the last four months for a couple of different reasons, but one, so that they, when they're done, when they're, they're done with the training now, pretty much in the next few days, they'll be available for some of these open shifts. So, they're ready to go. They're ready to go to work for us. Um, and unfortunately, just by happenstance, we have two open slots. So, they're probably both going to go into those open slots to alleviate some of the overtime costs for the next six weeks or so, seven weeks, until they, uh, go to the next academy, which is in March.
Thanks.
So, they're, and both, they're both local, local people. They, they.
I just felt that the public needed to know that we weren't just having trouble, that they had been with it. I know they've been there for at least four to five months now.
Yeah, they've, they've rotated through every shift. Uh, all the sergeants and all the patrolmen have had a good look at them. Um, no complaints. They've both worked out really well, so.
And, yeah, and I think.
I'm pleased with, uh, their, their commitment and their, their work.
Thank you.
I think we were fortunate that we had two, um, P I candidates that had already gone through the academy who were already trained even before you started training, and that was such a benefit for our community.
Saved a lot of time.
Yep, and I, you know, I hear them on the radio. I, you know, I see them around. They're really dedicated. They're definitely pulling over plenty of vehicles, um, getting lots of training in, and so, um, I think that you, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, you know, I, I appreciate your, the way that you've been handling the hiring at all times by, by creating the pool of PIs. It's, it's a way for us to, not to simply hire from a re, a list, but to hire from, you know.
Known individuals.
You know, known people who, you know, you've sort of watched train and, you know, I'm really excited for them. I, I know we met them both and we were pretty impressed by them, and I think that as they're entering the academy, we have Joe Cushman, um, graduating. He'll be training for another short period of time and then he'll be, you'll have at least one of those shifts.
Go right into his slot and work his shift, yeah.
I know that your budget, you know, you have been having to fill a lot of the shifts with overtime, so, you know, we appreciate the way that you've been managing your budget and trying to keep things on target, so.
Hopefully it works out.
Yep.
Well, so, and this, you know, and the, the, the biggest point, or not the biggest point, but the, the, one of the, the advantages of this too is, is moving with the two of them is that this actually fills the open, the last open slot that we have. It gets us the eleventh man on the road that we've been trying to do for a long time, so it's, uh, it's a, it's a big step for us.
Huge. I think we had it for about twenty minutes.
Fifteen, please.
So, that's, that's, uh, that's where I'm at. Ask the board to sign the, or approve the appointment, uh, those two options.
When you say emergency, do you have to go through civil service to be able to have them on the road, on their own shift?
Full-time. So, once they, once they get their appointment, if they get their appointment tonight, which I'm confident they will, um, they'll get their full-time appointment signed with the board through civil service. My next step is to get a waiver from civil service to allow them to work full-time without having a full-time police academy. What that waiver does is allows them to work until the next, the, where is the next available academy. It's not an indefinite period. It has to go. They have to go to the next available academy. They're scheduled to start in March if everything goes according to plan. So, all, all that is in place and, and ready to go.
When, when's the academy in March?
March.
First, it was at the end.
No, it's not the first, it's probably twenty-six, I thought.
I thought it was the beginning. Is it? Okay.
I think it's the.
I know, you know, we got an extra day in March, so it's important to know.
Yeah.
March.
So, it's March first or end, I don't know.
It starts in March.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion because I'll do it.
Yeah, well, I, uh, everything that the board has stated is in full agreement. So, Ryan E. Simpson is number one on the list?
Yes, sir.
And Patrick R. Duro?
Duro, yep. So, I'll make the motion.
No, I mean, for your.
Oh, for the pronunciation? No, it's Duro, I just.
Um, Kim, just, I just want to check on a couple of things. One, the civil service list has been called. These are the two top people on the list. We're not doing any bypasses or anything?
That's correct.
Yeah, these are the original first two that came up in a row that also, and you also mentioned, and why you have these two others that are going to go into the intermediate?
Well, we have two, right, two off the current P I list that are scheduled for the, uh, part-time academy, uh, when that starts. And just to keep the ball rolling, I'll be back again in the next few weeks or months to, uh, apply for another list for part-timers. Because originally, we, the board, what we had discussed, and we wanted four PIs that would be, you know, available to look at for the next, hopefully not the next round of highs, but for the next round of highs. So, this is, this is going to be an ongoing thing for a little while.
So, the next two, the next two PIs, number three and four, um, they'll most likely go into the intermediate?
Yeah, they're all slotted for the, uh, for that academy. They've done their medicals and their, their physicals.
So, that's something you're, you've been working on a while?
Yeah, they're all set, ready to go.
Okay.
The order.
So, I'm sorry. We haven't got any date on that, on that academy or?
Uh, there is a tentative start date on the order that's up on my head. It's, uh, the end of March, rest of April, I think.
Oh, is that so?
Yeah.
And were they off the same place?
Yeah.
And the order that Kim wrote, read off is the order you want them appointed?
Yes, that's right.
You're right, except for the.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll do them individually. Okay?
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian E. Simpson as a full-time, um, police officer for the town of Halifax with the following, um, provisions that he successfully passed the academy. He's already passed a PAT test, correct, so I don't need to make that part of the.
I think they're good for that. Like, there's a, a timeline on that, but I think they're well within the timeline, so.
Okay, so upon, um, successful completion of the police academy.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I will make a motion that we appoint Patrick R. Duro to the full-time police officer for the town of Halifax with, um, the provision that he successfully complete the police academy, the Plymouth, um, County Police Academy.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it on that matter?
Right, so there are a couple of other things that I think are a big question to the board and the chief simultaneously. Did everybody re-charge notes on the Halifax coin, gold coin? Is it something we want to do a meeting? Because I don't know if we should, if we had to get into a big discussion on it.
Well, I'm, I'm just made, maybe because I'm from, when I was a cop, if, if what occurred at that shop occurred, receiving property.
Right.
I, I was a little disappointed it wasn't charged when it was receiving stolen property, but, well, so was.
Well, it's, and, and, well, how can you talk about it? It's, it's unfortunately very difficult because the, the standards for the pawn shop to take in property is a valid mass I D, and that's it. So, when he took it in, he took it in under what he assumed to be valid circumstances, and it's almost no way to, to determine it. It would be kind of tough to go after him after the fact. Um, it's still an open case, the, the theft of the, the items on it. It's still an open case and it's still being worked, and so it's not closed and gone away by any means. Um, the, the pawn shop is kind of has some built-in protection.
But I remember right, though, did, did we in fact give a, a license for a pawn shop?
No, there's no pawn shop licenses in Halifax. He has a junk dealer or junk collector's license, so.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't apply?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't seem to apply to that. Uh, well, it's, it's a sticky one, and, but, but my, my first opinion is that I think we shouldn't have a hearing on it because this is not the first time that we would be speaking to this individual by, by quite following the rules that we've established when we gave him the license.
The second I heard about it, I wanted to have a hearing four weeks ago about it because he has not been the most cooperative business owner that we have had. And, um, I look forward to having him in front of us so that I can talk to him about the proper way that he should be running it.
Yeah, there's, there's, I, I tend to agree with the, the hearing issue. Um, I, I don't want to call him a difficult person.
Oh, you can. It's okay.
But, um, he tends to be a business owner that I, I have an officer assigned to him to the business to keep track of these things. And it's, there's a lot of reminding him what he's supposed to be doing, um, over again, so, you know, it's not always the same thing. There's always a new issue that comes up, so that this, I think a hearing would be appropriate to get some of these issues squared away.
And I'll have to have, see the copy of the license when the, that will be put the points now that he should adhere to all the bylaws pertaining to the town and under the auspices of the license he got. And I know that at least on two occasions, he has not followed what was supposed to be done. There probably may be more, but I'm just going by what I'm aware of now, and this latest one. So, uh, my feeling is that if nothing else, just a clear air, I think we ought to have a hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd hate to jump for a decision without hearing everybody's side. I don't think that's a fair process, as much as we hate to say this, and, and everybody knows it's not right. But, uh, I, I think it's part of the process. Everybody deserves to, to hear it.
If I did a fair hearing, yeah, they definitely did a fair hearing.
And if that's the way the board feels and the chief thinks that's a, a good idea, we can invite the chief and who, who was the officer that's in charge of?
Uh, right now Sergeant Sterling is doing the investigation.
Okay.
McDonald.
McDonald is, is the officer assigned to keep track of the, the issues of the pawn shop. So, he might be a good, another good person to have here. He has a, a good handle on what's happening and not happening and should be and shouldn't be, so.
So, would they be, we, we try to have them available for our next meeting?
I'm not, I'm not sure that Sergeant Sterling's criminal case that he's working right now is going to be anywhere near cleared up by them, so he may have limited information, but Officer McDonald certainly have the info that you're looking for for what's going on down there.
Do we really? I mean, because it's not going case, one of the guidelines we have to go by to, what can we ask and what?
Well, that's, that's.
Well, again, what's, what's happened in the pawn shop itself has nothing to do with the ongoing case, so you can ask Kim and Officer McDonald almost anything you want. Sergeant Sterling, I'm sure would be happy to give you an overview of the case, the criminal case where that, the, the items came from originally. But details about it are going to be limited.
Well, that's why I, that's one of these, I was hesitant about even having a hearing because I don't want to cause any, any problem that may cause legal ramifications.
No, I don't think it'd be an issue at all. I, I think the, the things that the board is concerned about, not that they're not concerned about the criminal side, but the, the issues that the board's concerned about going on in that business can be dealt with.
So, what sparked this can be discussed, but not the actual.
Maybe not the details.
Details, but what has transpired as far as properties being turned over and bought or sold or?
Yes, or.
And how not following proper procedure leaves it open for more of this sort of behavior, so, yeah. So, I, I will make a motion that we set a hearing for, um, our next meeting on January twenty-sixth at whatever the appropriate time.
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, you.
Perfect.
Second. Any further discussion on the, uh, meeting to be held? We got a public side?
We could have sent him a cert, what have I certified, nailed?
Okay. Okay. We don't have to, we don't even know.
That's all we've got, Donald.
No.
Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else that you wanted the chief for other than I have?
I think there was one more, right?
I have the elementary school windows.
It was the adoption policy for the dog.
I thought we did too.
Well, we've talked about before, and I had realized, in fact, you were, almost two years ago, the board had established a policy for adoption, so it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no need to do any more.
I know, I had to discuss with Charlie about that, and we agreed it was still in force, in fact, so we're good.
I mean, if you wanted to talk to me...
No. I don't mean anything.
Which no, what are we talking about?
No, it's already been, I don't need to talk about it.
Well, I, so Mike had mentioned the security film.
Oh, that. Oh, I thought about the dog.
And, I mean, I'm leaving that with the school committee at this point. You know, the chiefs were informed about the proposal for Mr. Bennett.
No, but you had mentioned, you had mentioned that the police chief and the fire chief hadn't any comments?
Yeah, I, I...
But I asked him before the meeting started if he had read, read that proposal from the school, and I wanted to get his info, I wanted to stop it. So that's what I was asking about.
Fine with me.
As long as it doesn't come out of your budget, right?
Well, well, the, the discussion is fine with me.
Okay.
Again, I read the proposal. It, it's one of those things that might be nice. It's effective to some extent. I think it's, that much money could be spent in other places to be more effective for other things. I think securing the windows, making them bullet resistant maybe, or break resistant, because you can always break a piece of glass, I don't care what you do to it, is, again, would be nice, but I don't think in the elementary school, it's a, well, it should be a priority for security. I think there's other things that that much money could be spent on and be more effective.
Is it being proposed because it's for security or for shaving?
For security.
Okay. Is that one of many things they're asking for?
Mr. Bennett was the, Mr. Bennett, this proposal came from Mr. Bennett as a member of the school committee. I don't think it came from the school committee or the school administration. He sent it to me, he sent it to the chiefs. He didn't get an immediate reaction. He, you know, then asked whether our thoughts about it. I sent him a note back basically saying, this is really outside of my bailiwick. But I threw, I threw in a couple of comments, but my real feeling is it needs to be left with the school committee, obviously with the advice of the police and fire chiefs. But it's their building and their decision as to the best ways of maintaining security of the building.
Would you propose that in a security, long-term, you know, security upgrades over? I mean, just because everything you hear on the news.
The only, probably not.
Okay.
It's, it's an expensive proposal, so it's, it's probably not, it would be way down on the list.
How much was it? Forty, something like that?
Forty thousand, forty plus thousand.
Now, can I ask, our illustrious fire chief from the others, have you happened to take a look at that or have any...
I did look at the proposal, but I looked at it strictly from what impact it would have fighting a fire, not necessarily an impact of school security. So, I mean, if, if it was to move forward, I don't think it would have that much of a significant impact on firefighting. And that was my only response to Mr. Bennett, that I felt Chief Roddick would better answer it from a, from a school security or law enforcement point of view.
If there's a fire up there, breaking through the glass, you're going to get through that glass.
Well, yeah, we would be able to, to deal with that.
Whether the films there are on.
Can I make a comment? Okay. So although I believe that Mr. Derek Bennett's intention was a great intention, he did not follow the proper procedure in the sense of this has not been discussed at all at a school committee meeting, nor has it been brought to a capital planning committee meeting. So I believe it's just an idea at this point. And given the capital items and the other budget prices that we're, we're facing right now, I'm not sure how much discussion we can really even have about this particular subject.
Well, it was brought up, so.
Yeah, but it wasn't brought up by the school committee or the superintendent.
In all, it depends on the air. I think it was brought up to be part of a major discussion on when we in fact talked about doing preventive maintenance over at the school, looking closer at that. I think that's where that came from, is that maybe it would be included as a general package to be looked at at some future date. Because I don't think that there was any intent, at least my discussion, that it would be going over this bad.
Yeah, no, it needs to start with the discussion at the school committee before it even makes its way over here, is just my thing.
I mean, I agree that it's...
Yeah.
I mean, it makes its way here, I got the chief in front of me, and he's going to grab him.
Oh, yeah, no, none at all.
You got the ball, chief.
I just didn't want anybody to think that that was part of our capital plan because it is not.
Uh, other than that, do we have anything else we could torture him with while we have?
No, he probably isn't being tortured right now. I'm sure he has other things that would do that.
Well, then we're not doing our job.
Um, just a, a different venue with USA Fitness. With their junk, what are their junk dealer activities?
Yeah, I got, actually, there's a notice from Charlie that on his flyer, he puts out the buys, I'm not sure, does he say sell?
Secondhand goods, no, it says buys.
Buys, buys, secondhand items. That day, without looking at it too hard, I had to find a friend, I sent Officer McDonald down, he had been working, I spoke with the owner. And he kind of related to Officer McDonald that he doesn't in fact buy things, he doesn't in fact bother. Somebody can bring in, you know, items that he's interested in, he'll bother for time at the gym, things like that. And it seemed interesting, I guess, or lack of a better word at the time. When I got an actual look at the flyer, his list of things that he buys is fairly extensive. And apparently he does sell them on eBay and has a, a small storefront in one of his gyms in another town that he does this in. So, you know, again, I'd have to grant towards the, to the board and the lawyers to see whether that's actually an fraction of the town buying or not. It appears that he'll be just buying things out of the storefront in Halifax, and actually pretty much admitted that to us. So how much he does is impossible to know, and just the fact that he does it, you know, may in itself be a bylaw issue. So, again, all I can do is give you the facts that I have and make the tough decisions.
Well, certainly it's an IRS. He's supposed to be bothering as part of the IRS process. I don't know how many people actually go by that, but if you're advertising to do that out of a storefront, as part of the store, as part of the store's business, I mean, you can put advertisement in, in any business around the edge, put it, you know, apartment for rent or help, but I think this falls in a whole different category.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure if this is a bylaw issue that he should have a license if he's going to be buying and selling anything in a Halifax property.
I would be saying, what, my recommendation to the board would be simply to say, send him a letter saying that without junk dealer, junk collector's license, he can't operate, transact that type of business here in Halifax. Obviously, he can advertise, but he just can't transact business here because if he has a storefront in other community, that's the other community's concern, ours, outside of the fact that he shouldn't be doing that business here.
He has admitted to buying items in Halifax, so he's, he's admitted to...
Yeah, but has he, has he sold anything in Halifax?
Again, well, probably never know.
And he may keep some of the items for himself.
Use at the gym, isn't it?
Yes, so it's, it's...
Well, the comic books, I don't think, unless they're here for free.
Oh, these comic books?
Oh, yeah. That's all I'm saying. And the thing I saw on one side, I was saying down the side that he buys, he buys comic books where he calls this number, I'm saying, I thought it was a gym.
Oh, wow, that is so funny.
I mean, it's, it's fine if you want to have multiple business, we have businesses in town that have multiple businesses. You just have to follow the rules that everybody else follows.
I don't have any major issues with what he's doing, as long as he's licensed to do junk dealers license and stuff to in and out, because that's, that's completely different than saying, I'm running a gym.
Yeah, it, again, maybe a, a letter from the board for some clarification and some, you know, requiring that he, what he needs to do.
I would move, I would move to suggesting that Charlie and the chief has made to reduce the letter to him, explain to him that this is what he needs if he's going to do that type of business. We're not looking to, cut him up, he needs to follow the policies, the rules.
Send up, send a line, copy the policies.
I will second a motion that involves not cutting anything.
Send a copy of the bylaw, sure.
Yes.
The Chicago chapter.
Company with the town's bylaw that he needs to be aware of and follow. He can inform the board what, what he's doing if he wants to come in and talk to us or apply for it or...
Ted, what do they teach you on the road? They give you the law.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
To back up on that deals, that the coin shop thing, they have a business in other towns?
Yes.
Well, this is kind of a first one. Can we find out how they've been here?
Oh, 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 I talked, I talked to people. Talked to people in Rockland. One of his relatives, only one over in Rockland. And there's been similar complaints like that at least over in Hainault.
So I mean, I'm just wondering if we can get any info from their town.
Oh, working on my end, I may talk to Ted about working it from his end also.
To see exactly...
That's fine, just send me an email, I'll do some background.
Does it, you know, I mean, we, we're pro-business, but you have to follow rules, you know? So I just wanted to give them the, the benefit of the doubt and see what other towns do. Just tend to stay in some, a simile of the same.
We're, we're pro law and business.
Yes, that's the word.
That's what I found out.
All right.
You know, soon as you're eligible for your job, something.
I believe that's what I got.
We have an eight-thirty.
Excellent.
Thanks, chief.
If you want to stay, or the eight-thirty, is that executive session?
Yes.
So, but also there was, there was some recognition?
Yes, which we're going to be doing in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
That sounds January twenty?
Twenty second of September.
So I guess we got some forty years, some thirty-five years.
But the chief's only coming in two weeks.
I don't know, thirty years, twenty-five, two twenty-fives.
A week at the fire department is a year also, is ten, yeah.
There we go, what a new year. Give those kids a big kiss.
I know, they're so sticky too. They're all, I know. You're just in the throes.
Go ahead, let them kiss you.
Yeah.
They'll kiss you to stay home.
So do you need a motion to go into executive session?
Sorry to hear, I don't think I'll be able to.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss.
Collective bargaining of the fireworks contract with the chief.
Do we leave, leave this room or go there?
My room's a mess, I'll tell you right now.
Oh, okay.
We could go into camp's, into, form his office, if necessary.
Why don't we just clear the room and...
Okay.
They can, they can go, stretch their legs and... So what we're going to do, we're going to go into executive session, and then we're going to come back out to regular session, whether we have a report on, I don't see any report on.
I don't see a report.
What we're going to discuss in executive. But we will be returning to a public session very shortly, so if you're patient with us.
So I'll second it, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, for exec, we'll be back. Okay. Next on our list is Fitzgerald. Thank you, thank you.
Got a letter of thanks.
Did we already send the letter?
I did.
Tom and Peg for thanking them for the donation to cover the cost of the detail associated with the fireworks in Halifax. A lot of the donation to help cover the cost of refreshments, decorations at town hall. Send us own thank you letter, the boards. Yes, I think the boards should send their own thank you letter.
I did do it.
We did some separate, okay, great.
Yep.
And we sent one to Mr. Egan.
Did the clerk sign it? We, we did that one last meeting, didn't we?
Uh huh.
Okay, good. Halifax County Club, Northland Properties. Letter sent to DBD, no action for the board at this time, right, Charlie?
For Northland Properties, no action, just, it's an update. My, actually, I'm hoping that the deed's going to get registered either this week or next, so.
Right. Halifax Country Club, nothing for the board to do, but this is the update. Dispatcher, vacation carryover, I mean, it's in the contract, right?
Right, they can carry over, but it, the decision whether to give the okay is either the board's selectmen or the board's designee. In this case, I'm recommending that Matt Tucker be in fact the designee for the board.
I mean, because we do it for the highway, but yet the highway superintendent doesn't do it.
Right. We, I think the language is written differently in that contract. I think it doesn't, I think it specifies it's the board's selectmen. And then in the contract with the comp center union, it says the board's selectmen or it's designee.
I'll make a motion that we designate Matthew Tucker as our designee in the decision of vacation carryover for the dispatchers.
Second.
Here's the communications center director, so.
Let him direct.
So direct. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Twin River Farm has failed to complete the work, the roads, where's Two River Farm?
Going in, it's out, I think it's south Halifax, if I remember right.
Well, it's, it's one on the right-hand side, isn't it, if you're going down?
But it's a fairly small, it's not, it's not Highland Woods, it's a much smaller development.
Is it down, that's down one of five?
I'd have to go back to the maps and check.
So go ahead, we're having a problem cash?
Well, we've had a long problem. Luckily, in this case, where the developer has not finished the infrastructure work as opposed to some of the other developments in town where we're preventing building permits from being granted, we have money in the bank, but to use that, there is a process to go through. And council's been working with the planning board and their secretary to start the process. Basically, what it will come down to the next step will be to be sending a letter to the developer saying, you've got to make progress or, and show how you're going to do that in the very, very near future. We're talking a matter of weeks. And if not, we're going to move forward. One of the things that may be required will be a vote at town meeting, use the amount of money that we have on deposits, over a hundred thousand dollars. And that requires appropriation of that money, not additional town appropriation, but the appropriation money to actually do the work on that property.
This predates our planning board taking it on of retaining a piece of property?
I think they dealt with, in fact, simply, they dealt with this differently. It's been ten years. I think the other, it may be that, it may postdate it in a sense of, they may have, this may be a development that occurred later than the other ones where we have problems with, where they decide the best thing was to get the cash deposit.
I think, I think what happened was that the earlier ones, the contractor wasn't willing to put money up and, or land up instead of even, they accepted it at that point.
Because, you know, usually we hear about these way before this point.
Yeah.
Are there still lots to be developed down there?
Um, I don't, if there are, there's only one.
Okay. So there's nothing for us to do, but will we encourage these?
I just, you want the board to be aware of it in case somebody rather asks you what's happening with this subdivision, you'd know.
So there's nothing we can do about it?
There's nothing, well, there's nothing for you to do about it, but it's the planning board's jurisdiction right now, or you have council. And that's what's happening.
Do we get that from them, or are they the ones that are working on this?
They work on it.
No, are they working on this?
Yes. That's why I brought this in. Because this is, I have correspondence between council and the planning boards. And I wanted the board to be aware of it. If you wanted to read the correspondence, it's sent in the mail file.
So they've already been talking with town council on this to get this done?
Yes.
Okay. Rise and overcharge is?
Yeah, I just had heard from Tony Ross over at the police department late today. The only overcharge we're going to be eligible for is the sixty-one fifty.
Total?
Yeah. Hey, I'll take sixty-one fifty.
How much, how much do we pay Tony to write all that paperwork up?
I don't know.
Okay, it's nine thirty.
Don't start with me. I got home to go to a tell you.
Group health commission? So you don't need anything for us on the sixteen fifty? So, group health?
Just something recommending that the board send a letter to its legislators about the possible request by the GIC for another hundred and twenty million dollars of funding. Basically, GIC, if you think of it just as the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, but much, much larger. It covers the state employees, it does cover a number of municipalities that had decided to participate in this. They set up a rate structure that's not fully funding.
One, the other is getting away.
And so they need to probably be asking the state for additional money. Well, that's very well and good, but nobody else is going to get a state bailout. They need to adjust their rates to do two things. One, so there's sufficient money on a month-to-month basis to cover their expenses. But second, they need to start building up a reserve fund of their own, but that needs to be through their rate structure, not subsidies for the state.
Thank you, say amen to that, Charlie. It's true, because what it's doing is, you know, in the Mayflower group, we're all responsible for our own rates. And the usage, you know, our rates are affected by the usage. At the state, any deficit touches the regular taxpayer instead of just the uses of that insurance group, so I.
But they have bigger pockets.
Yeah, but you have people who are not in the insurance plan paying for the plan.
Right, so I make a motion.
Paying for the others?
Yes, we're all paying for the people, so we're subsidizing their insurance.
Indirectly.
Yes. So I'll make a motion that we send a letter to our legislators, you know, supporting the rate increase for GIC and not to touch the cities and towns of Massachusetts.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Mass Housing approved Blackledge Development. ZBA, they've come to ZBA for a?
Not yet, I expect sometime later this month, the application for a comprehensive permit will be filed. And then probably starting in February, hearings will occur.
Have we sent a note up to ZBA to let them know that this property's coming?
Yes.
So they're aware of it?
Yes.
I mean, I know we got some paperwork in here and there's their state, their judgment for this lot. Wasn't that part of this paperwork? In here, of why they approved this?
There's a letter from Mass Housing.
Mass Housing, yeah. Saying why they approved it.
Yes, yeah.
So that's for everybody's reading? Because really, it's out of our bag, I got them.
It goes to ZBA, the board along with all the other town departments are going to be able to participate in the hearing, provide comments, ask questions.
So we can go through, once it comes in, we can go ahead and put up comments together. Hopefully, the other departments will do the same. Fire, police, schools.
Highway.
Highway. Good, Charlie.
My nominating committee, I don't see any reason to send any nominations in.
We're not recommending.
Well, I believe Ms. Roy has already been nominated.
You guys don't nominate me, I'm nominated by Maya.
By the committee itself.
The committee itself chose her out of all those qualified candidates.
Three twenty-one Ponson Street on the back taxes for this, this is the property near the intersection one oh six oh fifty-eight where.
The car lot there?
Right, and where the previous owners, when the collector's office had sent them the certificate of misspelling, they failed to include the tax sale amounts. So we're still trying to get the tax sale. But they also own a lot at three oh nine South Street. It appears from correspondence that they're in the process of trying to make sure that all taxes are paid possibly for a sale of property. But what I've done is encouraged the treasurer collector to work with council to start whatever proceedings could occur to obtain the back taxes on the Mon Ponson lot. To the point of basically, I said to her, just give town council permission to draft a letter. You'll, all you'll need to do is sign it, you don't have to do the work on drafting. As far as I know, nothing's occurred. What I'd like the board to do is send a letter of encouragement to the treasurer collector that she work with council to make that happen.
So moved.
Second.
If, if they, if they do sell and move out of town, then it's harder to go after.
Much harder.
So we're trying to attach?
Well, not so much attach it to South Street, but the thing is that the sooner we do this, the sooner, you know, it's more of a chance of us getting the money, for one thing. And second is, if there's still residents of town, we have a better chance, because there's, there are places for leverage there.
So we don't know whether we can lean because of another property?
No, I don't think we can.
So there's, how else would you?
You go through an S's equivalent of small claims court to do something like this.
Just doesn't mean that they end up paying anyways.
No, but.
All right, yeah, I don't know, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
How many elementary school we ever discussed that? Council on Aging Ballroom Dancing.
If it, I don't see an issue with it, if somebody's going to be in the building for that hour, that they're going to be here.
I think it's great.
We old people need that. Don't say it.
No, I just, when other people work in other departments, somebody going to think, like Charlie said, it's a little editorial here. They might think they're going to go to the different departments and.
Can't stop it, I'm not going to spend time panning the door there or letting people in.
Releasing the old action there.
I'll just let anybody know.
I mean, just, you know, at that time, whoever's running it to put a note on the door, town hall is open only to, only to dancing for hours of.
I'll say building is open for this purpose, I'm not going to get into the, I mean, once the door is open, people are going to walk down the corridor. I'm just going to tell them that you can't be in the building, but that's the only reason the building's open. And if they want to try and talk to me about something that's relevant to the selectman, then that's great, fine, I'm here.
But I think they should post a note on the door every time they have.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
So it's, it's clear. It's not a note that's going to blend in with all the other notes we have on the doors. Almost like one of those boards you put up.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Is that something they could do? So that it stands out more than just something?
We'll get, we'll get a very prominent sign in the lobby is what my expectation is.
Or just outside the door and they can just bring it in. I, because you guys, it's a good day for Friday for you guys to catch up in town hall without the interruptions. And I just want to, I don't want to worry that you're losing it because of this. That's all. Even, it's for an hour, and everybody loves to chat, and you know how loves to chat, loves to chat. We just, that's my only suggestion, other than that, I.
I'm not touching that one.
Can we relay that on to them?
Well, somebody's going to get a sign up, yes, I'll be working with them on that.
Okay. So they're going to do it, they just need an hour.
Well, yeah, I wanted the board to be notified, so if the board had any problems with this because of the Friday, that you will, if you felt otherwise, then.
I mean, you brought up some good issues, and I just want to, I think that's the best way to address it. OPEP trust.
Right, there's no action needed, I believe I made copies of this for you. Basically, we have the OPEP trust in place now, but part of what we need to do is in fact have a trust agreement that basically outlines the structure of the trust, who's going to be the trustees, how, what powers and responsibilities they have. There's also the investments policy, which is to say what the trust can invest in. Normally, when we just were talking about the stabilization fund and other like trust funds, all we could do was cash, CDs, things like that. The OPEP is going to be a much larger list of possibilities, similar to our Plymouth County Retirement, where they can, for instance, invest in equities, as an example.
Do we contribute this every year now? So we've managed to get money into it?
Well, we've got about ninety thousand dollars of it, it's not a lot.
But we've never really set up, and it's way far below where it should be. But we've never set up like a chart where we should do this every year?
Well, if we ever, we could.
A schedule.
We could, I mean, one can be done, but it's, at this point, it'd be entirely impractical to meet that chart. Unless, unless the town's willing to put in, let's say, a million dollars a year into the fund, we're not going to be meeting our obligations anytime soon.
So every year, we're just winging?
We're falling behind every single year right now.
So is every other town in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're just winging the amounts that we happen to have, that we feel comfortable enough to put in.
Yep.
But it's not even coming close to the realities of it.
And some towns aren't even doing that.
No, I got that. Are there more towns now doing it?
I don't know.
Because I remember before, there was like one in fifty?
I don't know what the counts are right now.
But I mean, that's still not, you know. It's still not, just because they're not doing it.
Millions away from what.
Yeah, I don't know what, what other towns, but I know that three years ago in this discussion was, we were far and few between.
Yeah, there were far fewer towns participating.
So I'm wondering how we're doing now?
I don't know, I'd have to find out.
Go ahead. Five on Elm Street? No action is needed, secured, but signed. So this, suffered a catastrophic fire a number of months ago? Or is it possible to sell it? So it's an unsafe building that's been signage?
Yes.
I think it's falling down.
And it's not a, doesn't have to be torn down at this?
Not at this time, no.
So then they're keeping an eye on it?
Secure enough, the fire department would have signed up basically warning fires from entering the building. And Tom and Jason felt that was sufficient at this point.
Okay, water tower safety, antennas?
And I know the chiefs were just talking about this to each other earlier tonight. I believe they said Sprint's going to work with them on moving the public safety antenna that are up at the water tower, all the painting jobs going on, I don't know the details, but I think they're starting to get a plan in place.
There's a lot of coordination, I know, involved in that, so that's good. I mean, Hanson's doing that now, right? Or they will be this spring?
I think so.
When they're tagged, we're going to try to follow after them. Funding round coming up.
Great idea, Charlie.
Got a deadline of the thirtieth?
Right, I'll be talking with the board, obviously, on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
But I presented two ideas to OCPC. One is, while we're going to do this, we did the EDSAT, the Economic Development Survey work, and we're doing a presentation on February third. We're going through another funding round here. And what I was suggesting to OCPC is, if we, in terms of economic development, that, I was thinking marketing, but then we could branch out to a series of workshops for the businesses in town. And also, I talked to my colleague Dale Plow over in Plinton, and Plinton is also interested in this. Is, we have no business association here in Halifax and Plinton. And what, looking at the membership lists for the one in Brockton and Plymouth, pardon?
Have they?
If there is one, it's pretty much non-happening.
I thought we did have.
Well, we did have one.
Because they were, obviously, they stand it?
Chamber of Commerce?
During Christmas and stuff, they were having a group and a table up there.
Does this associate, was Rockham Trust?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it still existed.
I'm not aware.
Because I was about to suggest, we need to send a letter to them and ask them if they got some thoughts, you know, towards, towards that. But if I'm wrong.
Well, I, they may be happening, but as far as I know, I don't know the last time they ever had a meeting or anything like that, so.
That's true.
What I'm suggesting is that because our businesses are not members of the various chambers of commerce, they may not have the same access to workshops, presentations, information, such. Bring that in here. Have a series of workshops here in Halifax and Plinton on topics of interest for those businesses. Not necessarily on a permanent basis, but at least during this coming year. So we'll see if that's a possibility with the DLTA funding. The second is to bring in another, a higher level of internet to Halifax. The Town Lever, which is out west from Massachusetts, north of Amherst, is putting together its own system. They right now have no broadband in town, they just have DSL. I understand, obviously Comcast is here with internet, but I, what I've been reading and everything is, for many people in Halifax, either they feel the service is too expensive, or they don't feel the service is adequate. I have no idea what the costs are, I know, have no idea what the infrastructure that would be need or anything like that. That's why I want to look at that with OCPC through a DLTA grant. We talk about infrastructure like highways and water, these days, internet really can be seen the same way.
Developing satellite internet a little faster now, where now Comcast is probably the only internet provider in town. There's no competition.
Well, it's not, or not enough, whatever. But the idea is, is it possible, is it feasible to do something like that in Halifax? If it isn't, then we find that out. If it is, then we can figure out, okay, as part of this work, how could it be financed? Is the grant money available, is there sufficient interest that generate revenues from subscribers? Lever, I don't, not proposing that Halifax follow Leverett's way, because I think a lot of people would vote no on this. But Leverett passed an override with a ninety percent, a debt exclusion of a ninety percent margin up there, because basically the town's people said, we're sick and tired of just having DSL. And it was almost unanimously for a debt exclusion. Whether you were going to subscribe to it or not, people voted yes, because they thought it was important enough to bring that into Leverett. It may not be the same here.
What was the cost?
I don't know, I can find out, but here, you know, we would find out, the cost could be very different here, because we're more densely settled than Leverett. Leverett's only eleven hundred people or so, we're seventy-five hundred. And, but that's working with OCPC. So when you hear back from OCPC whether either these or both of these projects would be eligible, again, Plinton is interested in the internet project also. So we'll see how that works, and I'll come back to the board in a couple of weeks. Just for, on the highway department and Chapter Ninety, they make this request every year that the town pony up some money to match the state share, there's no requirement for doing that. And in fact, the town does appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year that is in a permanent account for the highway department. Does not anything to do with Chapter Ninety. And putting money in doesn't affect how much money we get from the state at all. I talked to Tom Coulter about local aid, there had been, Governor Patrick had mentioned as part of his budget, to balance the budget this year we're in, to do cuts in local aid. He said, in essence, that it's extremely unlikely that anything will be brought to the House to do that. So I think, and I believe Governor Baker has indicated that he understands he's going to have to make some budget cuts for the year we're in now, but locally is off the table for the year we're in now, so we'll see that happening. Let's see, fire department and LEPC grants, fire chief wrote the board about the following grants. This is one for student fire education at forty-four twenty-three, one for senior and early education for twenty-seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and one for the LEPC for hazardous materials training for fourteen hundred and twenty-five. The board could approve these, Michael has already in fact signed these, because I know that they were due and needed to get in, so that's already been done, but the board could formally approve the grants for those purposes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the grants for the fire department.
Second.
Any further discussion? The chief thanked the work done by Captain Cunningham and firefighter Jones along with AA Patrick for Orstrom?
Ministry of Assistant Tricer Forstrom.
For their help in this grant writing, so kudos for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the Concom and the associate members, this is just a note from the Concom. The board doesn't have any responsibility for the associate members, they're just letting the board know the changes there.
So they got, two weren't coming in?
I don't know that, all I know is that they voted to remove them for as associate members. And they appointed Mr. Hodron, Cardorn, to, as an associate member.
Well, it's just odd that you just, you know, there's no reason for it, that they voted to remove, to me, is a negative.
I can ask.
To me is a negative.
I can ask for an explanation, that's.
And, you know, was it in fact, just because they weren't attending meetings, or conflicts, or, you know?
There's something in this.
Yeah, especially everything that's been going on up there lately.
Fifteen Ocean Ave, we have a weird situation where we basically have an abandoned property, owner unknown at this point, because the deed is from fifty or sixty years ago, the family died out, the taxes have not been paid the last couple of years. Bills, the last billing address is in fact that address, and that's bouncing, so we have no idea who owns the property, but someone was leaving vehicles on the property.
Someone was complaining?
Someone then complained about the vehicles being left on the property. I left a note on the vehicles indicating that they didn't have permission, since obviously, we don't have an owner for it. And that person was Mr. Anderson, Dean Anderson of Hanson, who called me very upset, and, but would not admit to in fact having permission for using the property, and then stopped, said he was going to refuse to answer any or all other questions. So he then asked to meet with the board, I set up something for the twenty-seventh. He said he would come in to get a copy of the letter saying, in fact, he had, appointment had been set up, he hasn't come in. I don't know whether he's going to come in in a couple of weeks. The situation simply is a weird one, in that normally, we would find the owner of the property for having a junk vehicle. But the problem is, we don't have an owner, but then somebody else is dumping their stuff there.
Is there any way for us to check with Hanson, see whether or not he in fact has registered vehicles, vehicles that are there?
Well, one is a demolition derby vehicle, has no plates or anything else on it.
Well, you can get VIN numbers and find out.
Maybe.
Through that, through the owner.
But, but he was a person who called once and put the note on him, so I suspect he's the owner of the vehicles. I don't see any other reason why, give me a call, being upset with me putting a note.
Let's see, now we got a situation where a dog from Plinton is crossing the border without permission. Now we have somebody from Hanson.
Junk people from Hanson, okay.
Do we have an open door policy like that?
Are you familiar with the individual?
Long history.
We'll see.
I know him from high school.
Really?
Fieldstone Farms, Mr.
So we're not going to do anything?
There's nothing right now to do, I'm, see if he shows up. And like I said, it's, I mean, I may talk to council about whether there are dumping laws or anything that can be enforced, but we'll see.
I mean, you're okay to have one unregistered vehicle.
If it's in the backyard.
If it's in the backyard.
And this is in the front yard.
If you have an owner that owns the property.
It, well, it has to be out of sight of the public, there's nothing to be in the backyard, it should be behind a fence or cover or something like that.
And shouldn't, are we actively searching for the owner of the property somewhere?
There's just no way of doing it. I mean, I've talked to the collector assessor.
It's abandoned property.
Yeah, basically, yeah. Well, wait, basically, we're in, the situation is, I would expect that unless somebody shows up in the next couple of years, we will end up taking it through tax title.
Weird situation is, what you're saying, it's a weird situation.
Fieldstone Farms, Mr. Clausen sent the dates for the 2015 shows, I forwarded that to the appropriate departments, I did remind them that all food and alcohol permits have to be obtained.
You had issue with that before?
We had an issue with that last summer, yes, sir. See, cemetery deeds, everybody gets a sign.
Do you need a motion?
No, for the, we never motion the cemetery deeds. I'm sorry to derive, to deprive you of that joy that you might have.
You just sign them, we don't follow them, right?
Correct. Water, Montipon Water Management, if you met, the 64 legislation had indicated that the Department of Public Health had jurisdiction in connection with the legislation. During the last 50 years, things have evolved at the state level, and now both DEP and DPH agree that that jurisdiction, in terms of enforcing the 64 agreement, falls back now with DEP. We just had a letter to that effect, so no action needed, just, finally, we got an agreement as to.
Who's in charge?
Yeah, who's in charge.
Who's on first?
Business associate agreement with Mayflower Municipal Health Group, this is something that had come up a couple of months ago, council had reviewed it, and he doesn't have any problems with that. Basically, what this town is saying is that it will maintain the security of the information about our subscribers, we don't put medical information or anything in the databases and all, but even things like social security numbers and such, so. If the board wants to, they could approve it.
We were listening to you, Charlie.
And would there be room for one signature, in this case Mike's, if the board wants to?
Mayflower Health Group, council is fine with business associate, what, which one are we on again?
We're on the Mayflower Municipal Health Group Business Associate Agreement.
Council is fine with the Business Associate Agreement, and two copies are ready for the board to approve, and the chair to sign. Are we ready for that?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Troy?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We already talked about USA Fitness, on the solar farm, the municipal school building committee had written the board saying, indicating their interest in having the solar ray built on the old landfill at Hemlock Lane. I don't, they recommended appointing a committee to look at the feasibility of using the landfill as a solar site, and then the board's second can be advised by the solar committee, as the cons are pros on such a project. One of the building committee members, Gerald Joy, has extensive electrical experience as a contractor and business owner, and they're recommending that if the board chooses to have him appointed also, they're recommending, if possible, the building inspector be appointed, also Morty Bosworth or from, from the Fire Department, because he has solar installation experience, also recommends a financial issue, can look at the benefits for the project, and then I can act as liaison between the committee and the board selectmen.
How lucky are we?
They all want to be.
I don't know, I'm bringing this to the board, because what was interested in forming a committee or moving ahead on this, didn't seem prudent to be talking these things.
I know Highway mentioned something about.
Highway is interested, the Highway is interested in possibly putting up a.
A side, a center?
What was it, cremation wall or area, basically above ground, using the property.
Cremation meaning cremation?
Yeah, you, me, everybody's, we go in there and we get put up, you know, we.
Oh, that's a great idea.
They want to go.
Not a crematorium.
Why can't we put dead in the cemetery?
Because they don't think they probably have enough room right now to do that.
No, yeah, they're running out of space.
It's one of the reasons why, when, when we're going to get to the 61A parcel, they also brought up the idea of buying that 61A parcel for future uses, a cemetery down in South Halifax.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what size or shape or extent of this wall.
Well, we don't have, I have nothing, nothing.
Requires that, I wouldn't think you'd need that whole site to do that.
Not if I'm powder.
Well, if we did, if we needed room, we could purchase this other property.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's so wonderful that they took the initiative to do that, so I would be in support of forming that committee, so I don't know if we want to have the parties come in and talk to us at our next meeting or the following meeting.
Probably February is, I think.
Yeah.
I think we need to get together and have a mandate or some marching orders, we are going to start the committee.
Well, I think you folks can start the committee, I think you then bring in the folks who might be interested and say, here's what we need you to do.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the municipal school's ready to pick that torch up and stop moving forward with this, I agree, I think it should be done, look that right away, and then we need to get somebody maybe on the financial side, as, as anybody, yes, so it sounds like, they've already got two people that are interested in it, and are familiar with this, and now we just need somebody on the financial side, which would be, the first choice would be finance committee, right? President of the MIA, MIA, NIA.
She has access to all those, towns that may be doing the same thing we're looking to do.
So, I mean, yeah, certainly, we'd like to see them, if they would like to move forward with us, and how we can all work together to get this done. How will we do that? Are we doing that by just dating them?
You're telling me, Charlie, get this set up for a meeting, let's say the first meeting in February.
Yes, please.
Does that make sense, Troy?
It makes sense to me.
And would they have any interesting parties?
I'll ask them too, and we can put out a note saying that we're thinking of getting a committee together to look at that as a site, if people are interested, and we start taking applications.
Can we, we have paperwork we can pass on to them, from what we've gotten so far? We have some paperwork we can pass on to them?
Yes.
And, because Minister was in the meeting too, so that kind of helps.
Okay, consolidating buildings, there's this different note about accounts on aging, but Mike had mentioned in response to my, I sent the note out about Pope's Tavern, last year, there had been discussion about moving the recycling center in its operations, the Highway Department property, based on Mike's note reminder, I forwarded to the Highway Surveyor and the Building Committee asked them to take a look at this possibility. I haven't heard anything back yet, but it's only been a couple of weeks, I don't think everybody's met since then.
I mean, the reason why that came up was, you know, here we are, we're going to do a new senior center, we're going to keep an old building, we're increasing our inventory, and that's some of the discussion was, is there any buildings we can look at to decrease, so we're not adding another building, we're just shifting locations.
Well, we could always rotate, we can go down and have a meeting down there, and one back at the Highway Department, okay, right?
So, well, if this would help move that project forward by doing that, saying, yeah, we can do that, we're not picking up another building, we can actually keep the building numbers the same, because Pope Tavern, I'm sure we're not going to get rid of, and certainly is not going to ever come up to a code, as far as.
What a question to be asked, what, what happens to the building that you vacate?
The one down the end? It's an industrial zone, industrial building, it could be sold. And, you know, I think this example, room up at Highway, they'd have to look, they've mentioned it before.
I'll ask Highway and the Building Committee to provide some comments to the board for the board's next meeting.
I just think it helps if they want to maybe purchase this property down there for a council on aging, so that would help them in their pursuit for a council on aging building.
Just, that's a list of people that, we're going to do the Years of Service Awards in a couple of weeks. The chief had just mentioned this to me yesterday, and then realized, okay, well, I don't, I can't get everybody in tonight, so we'll try, wait for the 27th to have these folks come in. Speaking of the Chapter 61A property, Franklin Hayward Streets, back a month ago, we had had a letter in for property that's in 61A right now, Lot 1's about acre and third in size with minimal, no wetlands, Lot 2's under, just under 10 acres in size, about half of it is in wetlands. The prospective owner for the property signed a purchase and sales agreement for Lot 2 for $120,000, that's the large one, and Lot 1 for $65,000. I sent out a note to all the departments, asking for comments, we heard back from Highway and Cemetery, they mentioned, suggested it could be used for a new cemetery, since they're running out of room with the current one, future school site or athletic fields, the planning board wrote that they didn't have any particular interest, Council on Aging member, Joy Marble, had written about the possibility of using the site, I assume Lot 2, as a senior center. There is a timeframe for this, I would have to go back and look it up, I don't know if it's 90 days or 120 days or something like that.
61A, I think it's 90 days.
Yeah, but I have to, I have to look and see what we've got. But if we're going to be doing this, obviously, we'd have to be going to town meeting to do a purchase of the property. I don't know what the board's feelings about this are at this point, or whether they want to pursue this, and if so, how they want to pursue this.
Well, if, if Highway's looking at it for cemetery, there is some funds that we could use for purchase of that property? And I don't know what Council on Aging is, has for funding or indirect funding.
They don't have any indirect funding.
Well, I had spoken to Coulter and Cutler, and I know that recently, I can't think what town it was, just recently received money for a council on aging building.
Who?
They might be, bring money up.
A town received, they haven't done grants for those for years.
Yeah, well.
Which town?
It slips my mind, but I know that it was a town that was awarded, so much money.
Well, they haven't done that in about 10 years.
But Coulter, Tom Coulter's, when they broke it up, in the discussion.
Those all of the Dexbury Senior Center, it's like they all have nice, and they're all brand new. There's no way you're going to get Pope's Tavern up to speed, you know, unless you basically start, no, it'd just be too expensive to keep it the way it is. So would it, would it be cheaper for a new purchase lot to start with? Or is it an option that we have interest in two different places? Cemetery certainly would work, and there's some funding for that. But I would give first bids, I mean, I would give preference to Senior Center, but again, after the past few meetings, would town, you know, I mean, what kind of, can they put together as far as the purchase of the lot?
Well, I, I didn't.
And then propose building down the road, I don't know.
I, I honestly think, and I will try to contact Tom to find out and go further, because it was the night we had the meeting, the elected officials, that's when we had the discussion about that. Who were you?
I was there. But I wasn't talking with you, I was in.
You do that a lot. But at any rate, I think if we can contact Coulter, find out if, in fact, there is some money available, they told us that was available money available.
So if the property may, if there is money for that, would it be part of land purchase or more of the structural, this construction?
Well, I, I think it would be, probably maybe could be used for both, either way.
Oh, hey, is there any other land around town that we could designate for cemetery, or is that probably the more ideal spot for cemetery?
We have land up here in front, next door behind the church over there, that property belongs to us too, doesn't it? I mean, changes, I don't know how flat or it's familiar, but it's, it's available too.
What other property do we have that would say, well, we can use other property, we don't need to be purchasing this, so that would, that would kind of negate, might negate that property if that's the case?
Well, I'll ask.
All right.
So if there is no real good property around that we currently own, this, we really need to look at this, at minimum for Highway, for the cemetery, then I think we should look at it, we need to, but we need to answer it pretty quick. And if Council on Aging is seriously on pursuing, we're going to, we're going to know now as well. I mean, because we can't go to town meeting with A or B, well, I don't know, can we go to A, B, or C?
We need to ask the Building Committee too, not just the Council on Aging on that location.
Well, they've been, they've been at the forefront, helping them with it, but they're the ones, they're the ones that are asking, Minister.
No, no, but it was the Council on Aging, Joy Marble, who made the recommendation that it could be used for a senior center, not the Minnesota Building Committee.
Right.
So my thought is, we need to get their input on the location.
They were asked along with other departments, and they haven't.
No comment from them.
No comment, so when's the, we need to know when the cutoff is to make this decision.
I think it's 90 days, if that's what I think it is, then we, that's kind of really close, because we won't have our, unless we have a special town meeting.
Well, it's very likely, we're going to get to a subject that may require a special town meeting.
Oh, crazy.
Okay.
Because as I said, if it's, we go to our regular town meeting in May.
It's too late.
It's too late.
Okay.
Well, is it for an answer?
No, we have to purchase, we have to purchase the property.
No, you have to actively put a bid in for the property within the 90 days, because we're offered, we get first offer.
Would this not realistic, then, if, if, yeah?
If the town is actually really interested, it's realistic, if it's not actually interested, then.
Well, without those dates and not knowing that, I'm having a problem with even continuing with this, but yeah, you're right. Minister was the one that seems to be the one heading this for them, this, this isn't the director saying this.
Okay.
Okay, selectmen's budgets for fiscal 16, I put in draft budgets to the town accountant, I made minimal changes, all right, but that's the list there, and if the board had any questions about the budgets or if they want revisions, I'm happy to follow up on those.
So the overall, sorry, so the overall budget number is?
Well, the clerical went up because of step increases. The electric went up, again, because of the electric rate increase, town reports went up $100, because from what I saw, we're going to need that slight additional amount, and as it is, that's even without knowing what we're going to be paying the year we're in now, let alone fiscal 16. Office machines went down slightly, we're using less paper overall, and recruitment, because we re-titled it and we're trying to do an emphasis on training, I bumped up. Patriot operations, I decreased $100, because we haven't spent anything the last two years.
So meetings, meetings came down $50? Drop meetings by $50?
And then we have free cash certified by the state, so that got done.
Good job, Sandy.
Yep. Back to Pope's Tavern, I know during various conversations in the last few years about Pope's Tavern, when we've been looking at that facility versus others or other possibilities, we've also talked about that it's unlikely we're going to give up Pope's Tavern, and at the same time, therefore, need to make it.
Workable.
Yes. When I talked, John Campbell had called me about a couple of things last week, and he said, well, we haven't heard anything that anybody wants us to look at doing a work at Pope's Tavern, which surprised me, and I indicated I'd be going back to you all and the finance committees for some direction, because given, even if we had decided to move Pope's, the senior center out Pope's Tavern sometime in the last few years, we would maintain Pope's Tavern, and we needed to do some upgrades to it. I'm not time out in expansion, anything like that, but, you know, heating and wiring and insulation and plumbing and electrical and everything else, maybe some handicap access on the stairs, I don't know, but there's.
But you're standing at a ramp, that's all I was.
But that's, that's outside, that's not inside.
You need a ramp inside?
Well.
No, I mean, handicap access inside.
If we're going to, to the second floor.
If you want to.
I'm not saying it's practical, I'm saying we have to take a look at it.
No, I mean, it's in its current, I would not even think to put an elevator in there.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is that we need to take a look at what we can do with that building to make it, I mean, we're going to hold on to that building for several decades, we need to make improvements in the building plant. What I'm asking the Building Committee to do is, take a look at what needs to be done. Do windows need to be replaced, do we need to put insulation, do we need, when do we need a new heating system? I assume the roof is in good shape, also, it would have been, since they've done roofs on other buildings by now.
Yeah, we have all the, all the capital plan.
Right.
But I, I mean, I thought this was something that's been done all along, they've always looked at the buildings, even like the museum down the street.
Right, but what I, I'd like to know, is there anything else we need to be doing? Right, but what I, I'd like to know, is there anything else we need to be doing? Because we're gonna be using that building for quite some time.
Whether it be for the Council on Aging or some other use, the building's gonna be around for, because of his historical respect on it.
Well, it's hard to tell what other uses until something moves, so, you know.
But even if, so if it doesn't move, Council on Aging's still there, they're still using the building.
I mean, who knows? If, I guess my thoughts are that if we, and I still like to pursue building a Council on Aging building, because I think it's deserving. You've got several offices in this building that could use that building instead, because the building's not gonna go away.
Right, and we don't need to get into that tonight. I mean, there's a use for it, I think, you know, we've talked about that, so.
Wetlands, Phil Stone?
Well.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to find out what it needs, but to retrofit it for something we don't know.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not talking, the building itself needs to be kept up, and I'd like to know what needs to be done on that building for that to happen.
Oh, that's a fair question.
For wetlands, field, so far as I haven't heard anything lately, the traffic light, same thing. I know that town council, Wildlands Trust are still working on a conservation restriction. At some point later this winter, I'm gonna talk to the board about cell phone policy, because as far as I know, we don't have one as to who's assigned cell phones for what reasons. In some cases, we have board members from other boards who have cell phones. In some cases, we have clerical people for departments, I'm not sure that everybody.
What do you mean, that the town's paid for it?
Yes.
So those are the things we absolutely need to look at.
And if we're looking at, we're gonna get to.
That's under the police department.
Correct, but we have, there is no policy.
Yeah, that should be our policy.
What's, what was it?
It should be our policy, not the police.
Well, they're, they're the ones that got the bills and all that in there.
They pay the bills, but they just administer the bill.
The chief did suggest taking that out of the department.
Well, it's separated now outside of the line items, but someone's.
But that whole, you know, it's because of the communication centers why that policy was down there. And now that we've kind of changed it.
Well, if, if somebody else is gonna take over it, that's fine, but who's ever taking, whoever has it, needs to have a town policy.
We need to have the policy, so whoever administrators, administrates the policy. So that needs to come for our board.
Because that could really, you know, control, control a quick hearing for every.
Yeah.
Tom, I think it should come out, should come out of there and go to the appropriate department that would, we're gonna have the police department.
Do we have a communication department?
Whoever it is, if the board wants to reassign it to somebody else, that's fine. Call the telephone department, the telephone department needs a policy from the board's selectmen as to who should be getting cell phones.
Right, so let's talk about the policy first, and then we can talk about the logistics after. But right now, we need to set the policy.
But I'm not asking the board to do that tonight.
Okay.
No, we need to know what the, what is being done, what is going on with it currently.
Yes, agreed. On Larry Avenue, the famous Larry Avenue sign got replaced, not by the Highway Department.
I wonder who replaced it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is it legitimate, is it proper size?
No, it was, it had a large Y, I love how you did your notes, Charlie, that was great. It had a large Y, and we had somebody on Facebook who had some concern about it having a large Y.
The conversation went on for a while about.
I think there were about a hundred and twenty.
Why, what, why with the Y?
But Simon, where is this?
This was a street sign saying Larry Avenue on a post by the corner. It had the capital Y in Larry. Somebody pointed it out, said in essence, this is a disgrace. And then the comments went on and on and on.
Is it an actual EV?
Yeah.
Yes.
We adopted it in nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay.
It's off of Chestnut, is it, or, yeah.
On the left.
Oh, I know, is that, that, do not enter sign is torn down at the, at the Walmart. You know how you come down the street and you're supposed to enter to the left, that sign's gone now.
It's laying on the ground, it's not gone.
All right, well, it's not, it's not, it's not functioning, but the other problem I have with that sign is, it says do not enter here, but the arrow says to enter. There's no, it's, I'm, the building inspector.
I will contact the Highway Department.
You got people stopping, holding in traffic, taking a left turn.
I will talk to the Highway Department in Walmart about getting the sign back up.
I mean, if you wanna complain about a sign.
I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but I've given the board a copy of a survey that was done by one of my colleagues in Southeastern Massachusetts about what communities will open on Fridays. They surveyed twenty-two communities, three, including Halifax, are completely closed on Friday. However, two of the three are open on Tuesday evenings, we're not open any evening at this point.
Well, the building inspector and assessors are open? Are the clerks open one evening?
They're open by appointment only. And as, when I was talking to department heads, no one comes in and makes appointments, so basically, we're closed on Tuesday nights. The rest of the world, including most town halls, are open on Friday, and I think there's an expectation for town residents that the building should be open on Friday. I mean, I happen to agree with that. The problems with this, obviously, are we have some offices that are, of course, have nobody in them on Friday. And I understand that if we just simply open the building up, we're talking about this, for instance, regards to the ballroom dance, you're gonna have people coming into the building and being upset that a particular office is not open. I'm gonna, if the board wants to move forward in this, I'd bring in an article to town meeting. If those departments that want to be open Friday need more money to do that, I go to the townspeople and say, here's what's happening. We're gonna open on Friday starting July eleventh. If you want these offices to be open, here's how much money it's gonna cost you this coming year to do that. However, I understand, things are tight, you don't wanna take any money out of your pocket to do that. But don't be surprised when you come in on a Friday that those offices remain closed. But that's your choice to make, not mine.
But Charlie, could I bring up one point? I understand what you're doing, and it could cost the taxpayers a little bit more money. But why couldn't we change the hours of town hall during the week and not open at seven and open at eight to four so that we could be open on Friday and not have it be a budget issue?
Well, one of the challenges is that the, I don't think necessarily the board has jurisdiction over the hours that individual offices are open.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think, say, we're gonna lock the bill, I, I think it'd, I think it'd be absurd, for instance, to lock the building until eight o'clock and have offices open to the public at seven, but the public would have to ring the doorbell to get them in, I mean.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that with the budget, and we'll get to that later on, you know, it's gonna be.
Oh, absolutely, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the townspeople are coming up with the money.
Yeah.
But I think it, I mean, that we have several offices.
I think it should be presented to the town and let them vote on it, and because I've, on several occasions, I've come up here and somebody's been on a Friday, and somebody's been outside the door saying, well, I come to pay my taxes, and there's no one here.
And now, now I'm late.
Yeah.
I mean, we would, you know, as part of this effort, I try and set as many ways as possible. We, people can pay online, we can set up some way possibly of people being able to maybe timestamp a deposit so that it's shown that they paid on a certain day, or at least they brought their check in on a certain day. And there are ways of increasing accessibility even for those offices that are closed. But I would rather deal with the frustration of someone coming in here and seeing a human being and having this explained to them than the frustration that they meet when the door is locked. So I'll be talking with the board about this later this winter again, but I wanted to start bringing up the idea. I did talk to the department heads in the building, none of them object to it. Obviously, they see some of the same problems as I do, which are primarily that, you know, if office A is open, office B is closed, office A is gonna have to deal with the people who come in and want office B.
Asking questions about why office B is not open.
I mean, we're not advocating for more hours for the staffing, or, but it's, happens to be, it goes along with it, by opening the doors.
Cover of the town report for this year, I don't know if the board wanted to run elementary school contests like we did last year. Or another possibility is, during the year, I've seen a lot of people put photographs up on Facebook of various scenes and events in Halifax. I'd be happy to say to them, hey, we're looking for submissions. In either case, you know, we place a deadline on it, we bring everything to the board. In this case, this year, I would insist that the board make that decision at a selectmen's meeting. We had some confusion about how the decision-making was going on last year, and just to avoid that, you know, once we have all the submissions, at some meeting this spring, the board will make a decision about what to put on the town report cover. But I didn't know which way the board wanted to go.
I can tell you that I thought it was a great idea to have the Halifax Elementary, but because we did that last year, I don't think we should do it this year. I like your idea of the photographs submissions from the public. One event that sort of sticks out to me, that was a huge community event, like we could, you know, put something about the, you know, the Hops for Hops, or, you know, a community event, that, you know.
But we have to have a photograph of somebody doing it.
But I'm just saying, I think, I think your idea of just having somebody submit the photograph is a good one for this year.
I mean, we have two sides of the thing, cover two, so we can do two photos, one on the front, one on the back. I, I don't know why I just thought, popped in my head, is there any local artists around that would wanna?
Check with the Council on Aging, they always have.
You know, local artists that have some artistry that might also be part of the selection?
Maybe artistry of the town, like perhaps they've done a drawing of a building. I remember there used to be, Peg Fitzgerald had brought in beautiful, beautiful renderings of town buildings that used to hang in this room.
I mean, even yesterday, your pictures, photos, or, you know. Host drone carriages out in front of the town hall, or, you know. Yeah, I don't know how you would narrow down something like that, because you can get flooded.
Well, what I would say is if the board wants to do photographs and paintings, we'll take submissions of both, but they should be present day. Because that avoids us, okay, you know, we can go down to the museum and can find hundreds of photographs from yesterday, then you send, okay, are we taking those? Are we taking a present day one that someone submitted?
Well, we can do current, current and go to the museum and find prior.
No, I think Charlie makes an important point. I think you're right, because it's about the current year that we're in, so it should be a current photograph.
Well, you're two sides of every coin.
All right, then it'll be Charlie and I on the front cover and you're drawing the back.
I just needed, I just needed, I just needed a decision from the board about what it wants to do.
I think the chairman should make that decision, what do you want to do?
Well, I, I wanna know why I'm being on the back cover, I don't understand it.
You, you got on the cover, didn't you?
And it was on the back.
Whatever.
I, I think the idea of soliciting some photos from the public would be great, Charlie.
Or, I understand, rendition of the same.
I'm waiting for something that the entire board is saying, because I'm getting different things from, from different people. Somebody make a motion.
Does it have to be a photo, or does it, could it be both?
It could be both, but you need to tell me that's either both or one or the other. Tell me what you want, because I ran into this difficulty last year.
I, I think the easiest and simplest way to go would be to go with a photo.
I will make a motion that we ask the public to submit a current photograph from the last year or so of something that has to do with the town of Halifax, and we look at them and make our decision based on that.
For the fiscal year twenty fourteen?
Yes.
Oh, not the fiscal, for the year twenty fourteen, for the calendar year twenty fourteen.
I'll agree.
You have to second it.
I'm seconding, I'm parting.
All those, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fiscal twenty sixteen budget, finance committee, the finance committee talked about this last night. The elementary school committee last week released a preliminary budget that included an increase in the out-of-district special education budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right. And that's a mandate, it's not something we get, okay, well, we'll only give you two hundred thousand dollars or something like that to that. These kids exist, they're out-of-district placements, we've, have more of them, and more of them are, we, some of them we used to have in district or out-of-district, so we're stuck with that number. It might decrease slightly depending on what the actual reimbursement rate is for the circuit rider, circuit rider, circuit breaker program. But it's, you know, it might be four twenty-five or four twenty or something like that, instead of four fifty, but it's gonna be in that neighborhood. We also had talked about the increases for health insurance, for retirement assessment, the electricity bills going up across town for the contractual step increases. It's likely that the combination of all those things are going to, at the very least, use up all the money that we had available when we ran the numbers in November. Basically, we had a much larger sum of money, and we are lucky to break even at this point, knowing what we know right now.
So it's gonna use all the unused levy that we've been sort of protecting the taxpayers from paying the taxes on? And it will most likely take everything in this year, and we could potentially have a deficit right now.
Correct. We don't know that yet, because we need to get the numbers in from the school.
Right, but it's, this is a pretty devastating increase.
So, and what this would do is, we might be able to cover, as I mentioned, the special ed, health insurance, retirement, electricity, the step increases. But once we've gone through that, no new programs, additional hours, additional funding for any line item, anything else, we're pretty much stuck where we are. In addition, as Kim was pointing out, not only would we see the nor, you know, a normal couple percentage point increase in our tax bills, my estimate back at the envelope is about four and a half percent increase in people's tax bills, looking at the year, the levy that we're in this year versus next year's levy, if we go up to full capacity, it's about a four and a half percent increase.
Which equals about what, Charlie, on the average tax bill?
Well, if you're at, say, five thousand dollars, it's gonna be two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right, which is a significant increase for our taxpayers.
And that's just for this?
And that is, again, an obligation that we have no choice on. It's not like, it's a budget that was submitted that we, we could say, no, no, we can't afford that. This is something that's an obligation, the same way paying retirement is an obligation in health insurance. There's no way we cannot pay this bill. So we are extremely lucky that we had the unused levy, or else we would be looking at certificate budget cuts in services, so.
And if someone's hoping that state aid's gonna rescue us, it's unlikely that it's gonna occur, simply because the state's running its own deficit right now. Admittedly, we're lucky we're not gonna get a cut in local aid the year we're in now. There are no promises for next year, but the very least, I don't expect to see any increase. We have local receipts, town council's working on compiling the data for that, but I don't expect a significant increase there either. So we're pretty much where we are right now.
Sir Galahad shot the white horse, but he might come and ride in and save us.
I think it's what Charlie alluded to at the very beginning, this was not the budget season that we were looking at. We were looking at, you know, you know, not a lot of money, but just a comfortable amount that we felt pretty confident that we could maintain services. And when this was announced last Monday, I sort of maybe cried a little bit. No, it was really pretty shocking, in fact, I felt badly for the superintendent, because I kept asking him over and over again, are you sure, are you right, you know, is this a true number, you know, is there a way that you're gonna come to us and say, no, no, I was wrong? And he kept assuring me that these are real people, that he's budgeted net the circuit breaker reimbursement. And when I saw him the very next day, he said, Kim, I know you're gonna ask me, but it is true, because I felt like it was the worst news that we could have received.
So John's jumping at the right time, huh?
This is, you know, it's, we're gonna work with it, I mean, it is what it is, we're still gonna be open for business, we just don't know what it's gonna look like.
But there's other things also, that you just pointed out, when I'm saying visual aid, we were getting grants, now we're not getting it. That's forty-two grand they're asking to make up for those grants we're not getting, that's just one. How many other are those?
Right.
We're gonna go with that one.
How many others in those, those budgets, the schools that we don't get money for anymore?
And, and this is.
That they're gonna wanna continue those programs?
Right, and this doesn't include the steps, again, that we are contractually obligated to do for the schools as well. And, you know, I think, Charlie, you're gonna talk about the finance committee met last night.
Yeah, and they like to have the selectmen come meet with them in a couple of weeks on the twenty-sixth at seven thirty to continue that discussion about, should we, in terms of talking around ourselves, but also going back to the departments and bringing them up to speed and what we can be doing or not doing. I mean, this is, the finance committee's been loosely looking at other revenue sources. They're not saying they're for any of these things, but for instance, they wanted the information on the meals tax and what the process for acceptance of that was. It's not a lot of money, it might be in the seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand range on an annual basis for Halifax, but would help. They're not saying they're proposing it, but they wanted to start putting together the language in case we wanted to go down that road, for instance, so.
And our hope is that by the twenty-sixth, we'll be able to have the spreadsheets completed and the budget sort of like organized in the sense that we're gonna know really what the requests are and what, what's the, the worst case scenario be? And then we, as selectmen, are gonna have to sort of look at the things that we wanna protect, the services that we, you know, the priorities that we have as the board so that we can sort of give direction to the finance committee to say, you know, based on these numbers, if there is a cut at all, let's say it's a three percent cut or whatever, and I'm making up the number, these are the areas.
It's my line.
I know, I'm just dealing with mine. But these are the, the, the services that we wanna protect in these particular orders, so that they at least have something to go by as they're going through the budget. So that's what's part of the discussion will happen on January twenty-sixth.
We haven't increased any of the services.
No, we haven't.
Forever, so it's kinda hard to.
It's hard to, I mean, we are really.
To even comprehend, you'd wanna take them away at this point.
I mean, we've always talked about how we are, you know, I know people aren't, haven't been happy with their tax bill, but when we look at the operation, we really are at the bare bones. I mean, there really isn't any fat, you know, we've got a pretty conservative group of the finance committee, and they really do look and audit every line item. So, you look at the minimum staffing that we have at the fire department and the police department, there's no way we could reduce staffing there, or reduce services there. You know, again, at the town hall, you've got two people in the county office, you've got, you know, two people in the clerk's office, there's not a lot of staff to, to, to eliminate. So I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen.
So when you're talking about opening up the whole doors.
Right, I'm not, right, I'm not saying that's not gonna, that's gonna happen. Thankfully, again, we have the unused levy, but with that being said, when we use the un, when we use that, and we try to maintain the services as mu, as we can, we're still looking at an average increase of $225 per, you know, on average for the taxpayers, which is, again, significant, so.
Is this gonna be the same thing happening a year after, you know?
Well, the thing is, it all depends on what's happening with the special ed budget. One of the things was, from 14 to 15, our special ed budget actually went down.
Yes.
And everybody benefited of that, was one of the reasons we could maintain that unused levy capacity. Now, there's no guarantee it goes down in 17, there's no guarantee it goes up, we're just gonna have to play it out.
Well, and I can tell you that, you know, John Tuffy, because I think I had asked him 12 times at this point, that he actually took out the list, covered the names, and said, you know, these are the students, you know, these are the placements, this is why it happened. So in the fiscal year that we are in right now, we've had some people move into town that now we are obligated to pay that particular bill, which was not budgeted for. So, we are looking at a $50,000 deficit in the fiscal year that we're in right now. The good news is that on, within their budget, the vocational has a surplus. So we're hopeful, we know for sure that that surplus in vocational will cover the deficit in the special ed. So, what these are for the people who don't understand, what is the special ed line item at home, is that we are obligated as a town to pay for any specialized schooling for any student that lives in our town to the age of 22. So these are programs that can be as simple as a collaborative, if you have a three and, or a four-year-old that requires speech, or behavioral, or any kind of services to the age of 22. So, for instance, we may have a student that goes to the Perkins School for Blind, we're obligated for that tuition regardless of how we, if we have the money or not. We are in the transportation, so, and we get reimbursed from the state, and the state reimbursement mechanism is called circuit breaker. And the, the most that we've ever seen from circuit breaker reimbursement was about two or three years ago, Charlie, when it was at 72%. That's the highest we've ever seen. It has been as low as 37% over the last 10 years, we've seen. We're budgeting it as a 50% reimbursement rate, because last year it was 65, and with the budget cuts that could happen at the state, we felt a conservative reimbursement rate would be 50%. Again, as Charlie alluded to earlier, if that changes, the reimbursement changes to 65%, then we recognize about a $50,000 cut in our, the increase or benefit to us. But that's still not gonna help with the structural.
So basically, what is happening is that we're gonna be using our quote rainy day fund to a certain extent.
Yes.
To pay, to pay the new increases for the educational process that has to be paid.
Right, with the, with the support of the taxpayers at town meeting, we would be using all of the money that we had not spent over the last two years.
Because we're...
In order to, yeah.
We're very fortunate that we...
Taxes down.
Well, we're very fortunate that we were conservative enough to put the money away two years ago.
Yes.
Otherwise, we would be in worse shape.
That is so true, and I hope people actually are aware of that, because when they get their tax bill, it, it's gonna be really very difficult for them. Anyway.
As I mentioned, the finance committee would like to meet with the board in a couple of weeks at 7:30, so, and that's set up on the agenda. Related, but this year's budget, the year we're in now, Silver Lake fiscal 15 budget. If you, to the little background again, obviously, we had the divorce with Pembroke a number of years ago. There were several court cases involving that. As part of those court cases, there was the possibility that we would have to be paying Pembroke certain sums of money.
For retirement.
And, and other things in terms of the settlement. And because of that, Silver Lake included that in the assessments to the three communities over the years. Well, what happened is the settlement was finally developed, we're not paying Pembroke, so the money's there at Silver Lake. Silver Lake would like to be able to use that money. At, at the same time, they have a number of capital expenditures that they like to spend money on. What they ended up doing last week was to vote to amend the budget we're, year we're in now, and use what's called their excess and deficiency account, which is their equivalent of free cash for speaking purposes. They have to do capital projects. The, my understanding is their plan would then be to take some or all of the money that was set aside for Pembroke, and then put that into the E and D account. In essence, I won't count on a real shell game, but what in essence they're doing is taking the money that would've gone to Pembroke, but was taken from the three towns, do that, and use it for those purposes. They're moving money around to make it look like that's happening, but that's, the reality is that's what it comes down to. In state law, if they amend the budget up, even if the assessments don't go up, and in this case, the assessments don't go up, because they're using monies other than the monies from the assessments from the three towns, they have to send a notice to the three towns saying, hi, the budget's been changed, you have a right to have a town meeting to reject this new budget. If you, your town doesn't vote at a special town meeting to reject the budget, you've said yes. And if two of the three towns either say yes, or don't have a town meeting, then the budget is good, and what they did was good.
So we're gonna have to have a special town meeting to speak to this, because, I mean, that's, in all honesty, I'm all for education stuff, my kids went through the system or anything else. But that's, that's highway robbery, that they're using funds that were, that was placed into their budgets to pay one thing, and they're transferring it into another account without, without our approval.
I think it would've been much better if they had said to the towns, we have a capital plan, we'd like you to approve money to do that, but we're giving you the money back from Pembroke, and you'll make the decision, you can use it for this, you can use it for something else, whatever, but since you gave us that money, it should come back to the three towns. They made the decision to do otherwise, so this is our opportunity to say no, or yes, depending on how the townspeople feel. I also dislike this because of the timing, obviously, because at the very least, we're gonna drop a couple Gs on having a special town meeting if the board wants to do that. In terms of timing, we have to have it within 45 days of the vote of the school committee, which means 45 days from last Thursday, I believe.
So they already voted without talking to us about it?
Yes.
They, well, they voted without talking in the sense of, that particular instance, we, there had been general discussions about the capital plan, they had general discussions about the Pembroke money, but no, they never came to the three towns and said, here's our plan, this is what we're going to do. They may have talked informally with, I'm not saying that, they may have talked informally with representatives from the three towns at various times, but never came, for instance, to the finance committee specifically, came to the boards of selectmen of those communities, and said, here's what we want to do. Are you gonna have a problem with this, or are you gonna like it, or do you want us to do something else? Nothing like that happened.
Okay, can I just interrupt for just a second, Charlie? Without being any disrespectful to the administration at Silver Lake or the school committee. But I'm gonna say this. They invited us, it's, what happened was, they wanted us to establish a stabilization account, okay? Town meeting, and two towns turned it down. They weren't happy with that, they wanted it established.
And they asked again, and we said, yeah.
They asked it again.
Okay, we can put it on the ballot, yeah.
So just to be clear, this is money that, when we calculate what the expenses are at Silver Lake. Silver Lake has certain obligations for the retired teacher that were, were, had shared with Pembroke at the time. We have to pay that obligation regardless of Pembroke was gonna pay their portion. So when we were calculating the assessments over that, I think it's an eight-year period of time, we had to put in what the amount is we had to pay the teachers for their retirement. So that was split among the three towns that were willing to pay. So, let me be clear, that the Silver Lake School Committee did not overcharge us on purpose, and they had no negative reason to do it. They had, that no bad intention in it, it was what it was. We were paying, we were kind of paying Pembroke's money, so let's call that a loan. We were paying that on behalf of Pembroke. Pembroke got, got, told it during the lawsuit, said, no, 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 Pembroke, you should've been paying that, you need to pay back the money that those three towns have paid on your behalf. So, in my personal opinion, that money should've come back to the towns, and maybe we would've made the same recommendations that the Silver Lake School Committee made in their capital improvements, but you didn't give us the opportunity. So what happened was, we got a request to go to the Silver Lake School Committee to talk about a stabilization account. I went last Thursday, Gordon Andrews was there from the finance committee, there were three selectmen from Kingston there. There were members of the finance committee of Kingston who had rescheduled their regularly scheduled meeting to be there, and there was a selectman from Pemb, Plimpton there. The word stabilization was never mentioned, instead, they amended the budget to include these capital items that they had discussed at a prior meeting. Nowhere in that discussion was it brought up that we could've had a town meeting to stop it. Nowhere in that discussion was there, you know, it, it, in my opinion, it just really wasn't done the correct way. And after the meeting, I was asked, oh, you had nothing to say? I didn't have anything to say, cause frankly, I was shocked, and I didn't know what to think of it. I found out about this particular regulation, because a school committee member from Kingston called me, and he was outraged about the way that it had been handled. And so, on principle, and yes, it's gonna cost us $2,000 to hold a town meeting, but on principle, we need to say, that money belongs to our taxpayers that overpaid it. Their tax pa, bills were higher than they would've been if Pembroke had been paying it. And so, again, we may make the same recommendations to our taxpayers, that yes, we're getting this money back, but a certain portion of it, we do believe these, these improvements need to be made, but give us the choice. Give us the choice, and let's talk about it openly. No way was this ever discussed, that we were gonna have to have a special town meeting, because we would've, I'm sure one of those town officials would've raised their hand and questioned, is there a way that you can put it at the annual, can you wait to vote this so that it can be timed, so that this vote can be happening?
There's some money coming out of anybody's pocket except Pembroke.
Right, like, we, we all sat there, in fact, one of the selectmen from, from Kingston turned to me and said, why, why aren't they talking about the stabilization account? That's why we were here. And I said, well, there really isn't a need for one now, because they've just spent all the money.
So they voted in a previous meeting to take that money?
They voted it in front of us.
Do they, oh, they voted?
They voted in front of us, but I hadn't, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I had no idea that it would require a town meeting. I had no idea that it would require a special town meeting until today.
To, to reverse their vote?
To even, to even support Charlie.
Yeah, I mean, if we do nothing, it's approved. We could, of course, go to town meeting and approve it, we could go to town meeting and say no. And if two of the three towns say no, then it's not approved.
Yeah.
Basically, they, they kinda poisoned the well, in hoping we're dumb?
I mean, I, I hate to talk about...
Were dumb enough to just let it go?
No, I hate to...
Well, I wouldn't say dumb, I would say that they were...
I don't wanna use that.
That it was not worth the pain for us to go through it.
And I don't wanna really believe...
So that was a calculated risk?
I don't wanna believe that that's what it was, I really don't. I don't wanna believe that there was bad intention. But...
It's no, it's not honesty, it's not transparent, it's not clear, it's not done in an open with the representative.
We all sat in the room, though, that's the problem, we all sat in the room.
Well, it was as transparent as it was...
Here it is, we're voting on it tonight.
Yeah.
And not be getting the facts of what you're voting on.
I'd be curious if the school committee members even knew it.
I didn't know there was gonna be a vote Thursday night.
Sorry.
No, I'm thinking about something, never mind, I'm just, I don't wanna say anything out loud.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna...
Was there anything in that letter? I read the letter, was there anything in there about taking a vote on it?
When the stabilization letter came in, no, there was nothing about that, there was a separate...
So you show up to, and you're, you're asked to vote on something?
Oh, I didn't vote, the school committee members voted.
Oh, the school, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, we have no vote in there.
Okay, okay.
But then afterwards, it was, gee, you didn't ask any questions. I, I was still trying to process it, cause I, I wasn't really clear of what, yeah, but anyway, I'm just being honest about that, I really was sort of like, oh, I didn't think we had a choice.
The taxpayers are the ones we answer to.
Yes, and so do the school committee members, though, it's because they need to remember that they represent every resident that checks the vote, not just the parents of the people that are in the school, and so their decisions affect the services in the, in, of the whole town, not just the students.
Is it a disservice to the taxpayer?
I don't, I don't wanna say that, I don't wanna go as far to say that, but I'm, I'm saying that I...
Well, I mean, they designated money for A, and part of that money came back.
Right, and I...
That, so we're gonna, we're gonna designate for B.
Well, cause they have a need.
And you don't have any...
But see, they have a need. No, I understand that, so I understand, I can understand why they did it, because again, they didn't have malice in the fact that we were overpaying. Like, they had not, they, we all agreed to overpay, so it was no bad intention.
And there was a good reason for doing so.
There was a good reason for it, absolutely. And so I'm sure, because we've been doing these budget cuts, and because their budget's been so tight, that when they get the money, they think, oh, this is awesome, we have, all these things are gonna need to be improved. And they are being smart in the fact that they're trying to do maintenance before it costs us more money later on. So again, we may have the same feeling that these are capital items that we agree with, but the point is, there are other needs that we have, like perhaps we would've put it in a stabilization account that our taxpayers could've voted on, because that's what we always have to do, we just can't...
But don't we try to do that ourselves a little bit too?
We don't, we have to go to town meeting.
But the main point of this whole discussion is that the towns voted to pay the money that they thought was owed to Pembroke. That money was earmarked for Pembroke. When it was realized that Pembroke, in fact, had to pay that money out themselves within this period, that money sat there. It was not included, shall we put it this way, to do educational projects. It was to pay off, uh, uh, retirement for people, so it's different, different in its spirit. If we had the right to vote it, to pay it in the first place, then we have a right to redirect that money without it being spent, without our knowledge.
I don't disagree, I mean, cause when we, we, we put our budgets together, and we have access, we put it back in, we re-vote on where that money's spent, right? We, we move this money from this account left over to this account over here to fund this account. We do it on all, all the money that we've been, we've been asked to oversee in the town. This didn't happen.
No.
This money is available, okay, this is overage in this account, the, the town needs to vote where they wanna transfer that money to, just like what we do every year. And they cut that process out?
Seems to be that way. Charlie, at this point, do you expect, want us to make a decision at this point about having a special town meeting?
No, because...
Or you wanna wait and get more information?
I think we need to get a little more information, we do have a large enough window. Rough, yeah, rough figure is February 22nd would be the last day we could do this. What I'm gonna be, probably do is coming back to you on the 27th, because we've got this issue, I need to look at the timing for that 61A property. Maybe we have both things on the agenda for town meeting, if that's up to the board to do that. But what I probably would be coming back on the 27th, I need to talk to the school, I need to talk to Barbara Gaynor in terms of timing, make sure we can, what window we need to fit. It may be that I need, if I need you all to come in, for instance, next week for a 15-minute session to pick a particular date, then I'll do, I'll make that request.
You know what, I, I, please, if I can go off on a tangent, this reminds me of when, when I ran against a certain individual, and I beat him by 300 votes, and he wanted a recount. It cost the town 2,500 bucks to do a recount that I gained 10 votes on. You know, that's...
And I just wanna remind you that it wouldn't make financial sense for us to hold a town meeting if no other, if Kingston or Plimpton do not, because they need two towns, so...
Well, you know Kingston's gonna be for it.
I don't even know if they know, I'm, I'm assuming that, that committee member called the committee.
Sure they know, well, I think I, well, I think one of the things is, I contact my colleagues and find out what they're thinking of doing.
Yeah, cause I didn't even know about, Charlie... Yeah, because I didn't even know about, Charlie talked to this gentleman as well, so.
Well, also, mind you, I know this sounds weird. As much as we only found out about today, if they weren't following the proper procedure, and we found out about later, that what they had done was invalid to begin with. In a sense of there were various requirements for them to do in connection with this vote, even if we hadn't known that we could be doing this, if they didn't notify us that we, of this change officially, not through Kim, but by official letter and by telling us what our options were, they, what they had done would be invalid to begin with.
But they did it in this meeting.
No, 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 it was fine, but there's, for instance, when we, when they vote the budget, let's say in February, March, the annual budget, they have to send us a letter saying, "Hi, we voted this budget. Here's your assessment number." And then we get to vote it up or down at town meeting. It's the same thing here. They have to send us a letter.
Okay.
So, if they had never done that, then the vote that they had made last Thursday would be declared invalid also.
And that's in their-
But we're not, we're not there yet. We'll see how things roll out.
Right, and Charlie, John Creed verified that it was the 2015. It could only be that budget in order for them to purchase the stuff.
I'll keep the board up today about what's going on with that. Totally separate.
I'm just seeing if I'll ask.
Well, next to last, one more thing. Just in terms of, when I sent out the town meeting, we've done, we've put surveys in there before. What I wanted to do this year, we did an open space survey five years ago. I need to do an update of that. I want to put that in as an insert for the town meeting.
Teaser, yeah?
Yeah, those are examples from, from five years ago. Also, we had done a cultural council survey, but that was done during the holidays in Halifax, and we had it on the website and at the library. But I got so few responses that I think I'm obligated to get a survey out to get some more responses. So, I'd like to be inserting that. It'd pretty much be a duplicate of the one, except the headline.
We did a Comcast, too.
We did, five years ago, we did a Comcast one also.
And I just wanted, if you guys didn't notice, but the Mass Selectment Association did update the handbook, and you have a thumb drive. I know.
I mean, which son?
It is going to be printed.
Which son do I use?
It's going to be printed.
You know what that red thing is?
Yeah, so, we hadn't updated the work, the, since, I think, this is the fourth edition. I think it's been over ten years. So, we worked this year, actually for the last year and a half, updating it.
Burn this weekend.
Don't read it while you drive.
And one other thing, on the green communities, I'll be sending the actual grant application. What we did back in the fall was send in the certification application to be certified as a green community. I've got the big check that's there. I have to send the application and formally get the money to do the work. That's going to be into this week.
You want me to drive you down and pick the check up?
I'm working with, I'm working with Jerry on finalizing the list of things we're going to be doing. I may need Mike's signature to actually send it in.
Should we vote now and allow Mike to sign it?
Yes, if you could.
I'll make that motion.
Vote, sign what?
This is the green communities grant applications. We actually use this money. I have to send in the list of projects that we're going to be spending the money on. I'm working with Jerry on that.
We agree on those projects or municipal?
I don't know yet, yet. Well, I'm working, I don't have a, I'm sure Jerry and I will reach agreement. It's not, basically, because there's a whole slew of various projects. We just need to fit it in.
And we'll agree, agree with that?
Which?
Whatever projects.
I'm not going to have any disagreements about it, no.
As long as they're green. Is there anything we want to input?
No, I feel, I feel pretty confident that Jerry and Charlie can figure out what the needs are.
A connoisseur in the bathroom or something.
Well, if that's green, isn't it?
Roy first, and then it's going to be second.
I second it.
Easy. Whoa, on the, on voting me? On, on voting me to sign it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just want to throw that out. Is there anything you guys have in mind that, because I haven't seen any of it, so I have no idea what, how you're talking about.
All in favor?
Hi?
Thank you.
You're all laughing because you called for the vote.
Yeah, I know, I heard them. Pam was writing it. Is there anything from road cuts or anything, abatements?
No, not until April first.
Maybe not by then.
Is there chauffeur to drive me home tonight? Because I can't see.
Late, seven o'clock.
I moved it with Jerry.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Any questions? Mike, here we go. Get all three of us.
Save your question for next week, okay? This way.
Oh, boy. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.